Is it recorded?
Good.
Okay.
Gary.
We got a new guy on camera.
Yeah, he did. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the minutes? You guys get a chance to look at the minutes?
I've motioned to approve the minutes as written.
Aaron makes a motion to approve the minutes or second the motion.
I was gonna ask.
All Jim, Jim Adalbert seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Under old business, I just, I, I got a phone call about that oil tank.
Oh.
And we talked about lots of, just some information and so we'll just.
Okay, oil tank?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tar, tar tank you're talking?
Tar tank, yeah, the ones we talked about.
That's what I figured.
Yep, yep.
Anything else, guys?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written with the addition of the oil tar tank.
Okay. Motion made by Gary, seconded.
Seconded.
Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Old and unfinished business?
Well, just in regards to the oil tank, Skylar called me. Cause he said that he, he just kinda heard through the grapevines and people were curious about the oil tank and things like that, or there were questions, so. Uh, and Marcy's probably got some of the receipts, if not John does, but that tank was bought off Purple Wave from a county in South Dakota. And it was holding like oil tar or whatever when they, when they got it. Um, that county had switched to a different product and didn't need that tank or whatever, so that's why they sold it. And I think he said they paid like twenty-five hundred bucks for it.
Okay.
And then he said the reason that the heating system was kinda dismantled is they had to do that to haul it.
Oh.
So they took parts of it apart so it would fit on the trailer and was with thing or whatever, but then, uh, he said if he remembered right, it was like three grand or something for freight. So he thought all said and done, to get it here, they maybe had five or six grand into it at the most.
Okay.
And then he was gonna look into either like Gray Hooman or Prairie Heating to see if they would be able to fix that heating system or put together. His, his, the reason he told me all this is he said the reason they went for that was because they had quoted a new one and it was like two-hundred thousand bucks.
Oh boy.
So he figured even if they stuffed ten into the heating system,
Yeah.
they would have a pretty good deal on their hands. And then he said that county told them that the way they operated is that it would sit cold for fifty weeks out of the year.
Yep.
And they would take about a week or two to heat up the oil they had. So what they did is they just contacted anybody that they dealt with and they're like, hey, when do you wanna do it? You know, well, let's go middle of April. And they would just all agree that they're gonna fire up the tank a week or two before, depending on how full it was. And then they would just, so they would have to pay for a lot of propane like in the short term, but they didn't heat it year round, they just.
Well, they needed everybody, everybody here.
He said if that tank was mostly full, that guy down there told him it took like a week to ten days to warm it up and then it would keep running for maybe a week or so. So he said for like two weeks or so, they burned a lot of propane, but then the rest of the year it just sat there. And he said that's, and he said as far as it leaking or anything, that it did, it did hold oil when they had it, it was like a third or fourth full or something, then they had to get it drained down when they bought it, so. Um, he said as far as if they wanted to utilize it, he would be available if somebody wanted to call him or, you know, but he doesn't, not an expert, but.
Yeah.
He said he'd be willing to offer any help if they decide they wanna set it up as far as just calling him on the phone or contacts with other people. I can't remember which county in South Dakota, but he thought, he said that there should be receipts from the Purple Wave and all that stuff, either John or Marcy, so. That kinda clears up, you know, cause I, I mentioned the oil field, if I remember right, I think they looked at one out there, but that's not the one they bought.
Oh, Purple Wave is that my track?
It's an option, yeah, Purple Wave just like Stephus and all that.
Oh, I hadn't heard of it, no.
See, I just get the feeling that them, them, they out at the county shop do not wanna fire this thing up.
Well, and that's fine, but that's just, I know Skylar had said that.
Oh, it's pretty good.
You know, well, yeah, that's what you just said, he said, well, he said that he watched the meeting and then he just was like, well, it doesn't seem like anybody remembers any info, which.
That's the way it seemed.
In fairness, that's the way it was, he said it got delivered there, well, it wasn't long after that is when he left, but he said that. The reason that the heating system was dismantled was to haul it, it didn't come in peace.
I do know, visiting with Tyler,
Yeah.
that the city, you know, he even said to me, may, maybe we should buy it. Just because it's, it's, it's just that big of a pain on cities to find this.
Yeah.
When you don't, when you don't need five thousand gallons, you, you need two thousand or eighteen hundred or twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah.
So they're like, well, maybe we should just buy it.
I think that's why Strasburg's in barrels.
Well, and, and maybe, maybe we should discuss this a little bit more, I mean, maybe, maybe the city of Litton, maybe you could donate to the city of Litton and then they fill it and then we could get, you guys could get the tar from here.
Well, and the county.
I just don't think the county wants to babysit it, cause I don't think they have the manpower.
Right, but I mean, the conversation really led to the fact that we had the place to put it. And then us along with Litton, it sounded like, if I remember right, Strasburg and Hazelton would maybe consider going back if they could actually
Get it.
get tar, you know, and then you might also have a Wishick or, or somebody that's just, they know we have it, maybe buy a thousand gallons. And so that was the reasoning for us looking for a tank.
Right.
And then the reason why the county was going for it is cause, yeah, we have that property out of town. We could put it in the corner of the county lot out there, it's not gonna be too much damage.
They wouldn't do that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that we had the property where you could easily access it, get out there, get, you know, where Litton, where do you put it? You put it in town to your, so whatever, so.
Right.
That was the avenue and the reasoning for doing it, and again, from the sounds of it, I don't know this for sure, but it sounds like we got about five or six grand into this thing, so it's not like.
How many gallons is it?
Ah, I thought if I remember right, I thought he said it was like ten thousand.
Eight.
He said it'll easily take a tank.
Yeah, tank or old about eighty-five.
Yeah, I thought he said it was like ten to twelve thousand gallon tank, somewhere, maybe even bigger, I might have, he called me about a week or two.
I don't know, I don't think you need to worry about it leaking. They should protect.
Well, that's, I mean, like I said, when he, he said when they bought it, it, it was holding material already, it wasn't like just laying out a cornfield or something, so I mean, it was, it was being used, but they were transitioning to a different product.
Sure.
I still think this would be a benefit to the county and possibly neighbors that we could work with.
Well, I think.
Like you said, maybe Wishick or McIntosh County, you know, they've, they've got some pavement too, they don't have a ton, but, um.
They have more than we have.
Well, it's no different than ambulances or fire or anything, like sometimes you just need a little help from the neighbors. Like if we can put up the tank and it works out for us and it works out for some other guys, like, I mean, it, it, if you can, it's not like we're gonna have a hundred grand into this thing, you know, like, and so that was, I think that was the main reason Skylar called too, is nobody knows what they paid for, nobody knows where it came from, it's like, well, that wasn't true technically, it's just nobody really remembers and we've got a new board, we've got new members, and that's why, that's why he reached out to me to say, so we should have all the receipts on it, but anyway, that's, so, the mystery of the oil tank.
We can visit Russ again when he comes in.
Right.
I mean, we, we could always set it up, use it for a year. And if it's really that taxing on the guys, then maybe it's not worth it.
Sounds like the heating system will be the biggest hurdle and that's where he was just gonna reach out to Prairie or Gray Hooman, see if somebody would be able to tackle it or, or if they would know someone to reach out to, cause it's basically just a giant gas burn system, so.
Oh, yeah.
He thought one of them would be able to maybe figure it out, but he said he never got that far, that's the reason why.
Yeah.
I would think it doesn't need a lot of babysitting once it's.
No, watch your fire out.
You gotta leave it on, Dan.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the city of Litton, they, they fire up their tar wagon too and let it run, and you know, when they're gonna tar the next day, it runs all night, they park it out in the parking lot. And I guess if it starts on fire, somebody calls the fire department, I mean, it happens, but I don't, I don't think, you know, they maybe swing by before they go to bed at night or somebody, you know, one of them to check on it, but.
Yeah.
There is, yeah, no babysitting either.
Well, and I think even that tank is insulated, so.
Yeah.
As far as once it's warmed.
It's insulated.
Once it's warmed, I think once the tar is liquid, it kinda maintains.
I need a couple touch-up spots by the time it's been rolled around and picked up.
Well, I mean, if it's been mishandled since it got delivered here too or something, then that's another question.
Cause I think it's just foam, right? If I.
Yeah, it's probably asbestos.
Okay, that's good to know, thanks, Eric.
Okay.
Cause I didn't know, not what you heard was.
I, I didn't even, honestly, I misspoke when I said oil field, cause I know they looked at one out there, but obviously it's either them or guys before that, cause this isn't the first time it came up, but they bought it off an auction from a county in South Dakota, and I don't remember which one he said.
And it was workable at that time.
That's what he said.
Yep. Okay, Strasburg Care Center, supporting the building. How you doing this morning?
Good, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, wanted to give you an update, um, we had a big picnic, I don't know if any of you made it on Sunday, um, but we had served about three-hundred-and-fifty people, uh, very nice, very nice party for the residents. And great community turnout with serving three-hundred-and-fifty and, um, Colleen did an awesome job with the band and, uh, so she, we announced the, the new building project and Colleen came back to me and she said, we would do a polka fest for you, um, somewhere, um, wherever you wanted. Um, we would bring out another band, another polka band and do a two-day, or a one-day show and play continuously, um, for fundraisers, like, that was very good. And it's the first time ever we ever put out a donation bucket, uh, and our donation bucket came, I was very well surprised on how the donations went for that day. But I, I wanted to come back to you to see what you found out and then also to tell you that we have acquired the land across the street from the nursing home.
To the south?
Yeah.
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 Sacramento area?
Yeah, yes, straight across the street. And there were, well, um, we secured about four and a half acres to five acres of, of that.
So that's where you would build it?
That's where we would build it.
That makes it easier.
It, it, it makes it a win-win situation.
Yep.
And just today on the, on my drive up here, the President Nikki Wagner from Long Term Care Association called me, she said that the loan application just came out today from the Bank of North Dakota. And so that's due, um, within the next thirty days. And so I'm trying to get the financing lined up. And, and with that, um, the legislature passed it, um, they put fifteen million dollars away.
How much?
Fifteen million for new building projects and, and the terms on that new building project is the building has to be at least thirty years old before they'll accept an application, which are just sixty years, so we don't have a problem with that.
No problem there.
And, uh, they set it up the same way they set the hospitals up, the hospitals have the same loan program and, and for the hospitals, they gave a hundred million, but due to budget constraints this last year, um, so hopefully the next legislature session, we can get that up to a hundred million, but we would not be eligible once you apply, um, you're done until it goes through the whole process. So with just being fifteen million in there, they're looking at funding one, two, or two to three projects. The maximum you can borrow is ten billion dollars. Um, and that's a one-time deal until they go through all the nursing homes, uh, that need it. Um, and then ten million, and so they're looking at giving one ten-million-dollar project and one five-million-dollar project. And this is up to the Bank of North Dakota, they could actually switch it up to three five-million-dollar projects. And so you asked last time, you know, what about the financing? Three million, yeah, the county commissioners would, um, give us three million dollars and then five million dollars from Bank of North Dakota. Um, that gives us eight million and then, um, ten million dollars per SBA as well. And, um, I pay these, our auditors, I don't know if I told you our auditing company last time, but they're the best, in my opinion, best in the United States. They are all over the United States, but they do a fantastic job. They did a financial feasibility study for us. And, and the most they can forecast that out is five years, but for the next five years, it would pay for itself and it would truly make the cash flow for us. I know there was a little concern last, last month when I talked about, you know, help. And, and since that time, we've hired a full-time, um, Assistant Director of Nursing and, uh, another RN that is gonna come down here. And, and we hired, uh, we're looking to hire two brand-new CNAs and so that'll take our travelers way down. And that's actually gonna cut us about twenty-four shifts a month. And so I think I mentioned when I first got here, um, three years ago, we were spending right at two million dollars, um, for travelers. This last year, we spent two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, this is all for travelers. And then according to these two new CNAs and, and, and one new nurse, um, that, that's gonna be, hopefully, we're gonna cut that down to around seventy-five thousand. So it should cash flow very, very well. Excuse me, any questions?
Any question, guys?
Is this a private engine or a private?
It's a five-oh-one-C-three, it's not, no, it's not private, that's a, uh, nonprofit corporation.
Nonprofit corporation?
Yes.
Well, I think the problem lies that the county really doesn't have three million dollars that we can commit to and we don't really have three million dollars that we can budget for next year. This would almost have to go to a county-type vote of a sales tax or, uh, some kinda tax or something to support this.
I think the three million was over twenty-five years, twenty.
Twenty-five years.
So it, I had, I had a note on that from last month that came out to roughly like three mils.
It'd be.
Per year for like twenty, that, that, cause it came to something.
Hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Twenty-ish.
Three mils per year?
Yeah.
Oh.
For like twenty years, so that's.
And that'd be a hundred-and-twenty thousand a year, would it be?
And where would that, like, just in the general or where?
I don't know, I just using that, I, I had a note, I'm like, when I was going through last month's stuff, in case I wanted to bring up anything else, the one note was that the three million was over twenty years, which came out to about a hundred-and-twenty thousand a year, which roughly is gonna put you in that two-and-a-half to three mil range, not, not saying it should or could come from anywhere, just that's the number.
That's the number.
I mean, that's, that's what you're, it's not three million in one lump sum, it's over twenty.
And then did you say something about Health and Human Service Fund, it could come out of? Positive here.
I just crunched the number.
I think somebody mentioned about the Health and Human Service Fund.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there's a variety of different funding mechanisms that maybe could come from, but I, it would depend on the restrictions and the cap limits and things like that too, so.
Joe, did you look into any of the cases, if we would go to all the people, which fund would we put that out of, I mean?
I think you have to go to all the people.
Right, I'm not sure, I, I, I was looking into it, I know I found, um, eleven-eleven-sixty-four in the century codes, it, it allows, it allows counties, if they have fewer than two-thousand people, which we wouldn't qualify, but they can set up a sort of a bond guarantee fund, which they don't actually pay the money, but it's for nonprofits that are gonna operate a nursing home. Um, so it's just a guarantee their, their indebtedness, so that allows them to finance it a little bit easier. I'm just, I just don't know where we, where we find it, where we can even really give this money.
Have you looked at Lewis and Clark Development Hall, I mean, would they be on board on any of this kinda stuff, Lewis and Clark?
No.
They would not be.
No. Not, not to my knowledge, um.
She could, she was looking.
Well, they, I mean, he was just here last month and they, uh, they're changing a lot of different things and they got a lot of different accounts and I, I mean, I would just, you know, we would have to guarantee that if it was a county, kinda the same thing Joe's talking about, I think with Lewis and Clark, you have to, cause I think the city's done that a few times with the NoDak Apartments.
Right.
But, um, I mean, there, there's somebody to look into as far as a, a funding mechanism as well. Cause I think, I thought he said they just had started a, a nonprofit branch for loans or for something, I thought he said that, but I could be wrong.
Was the name of the guy that was speaking?
Brent Ekstrom.
Oh, yeah.
Brent Ekstrom is the executive director of, of Lewis and Clark or the, uh, he's the.
I'm, I'm sorry, did I catch?
Brent Ekstrom?
Thank you.
Yeah, E-K-S-T-R-O-M.
E-C-K.
Lewis and Clark.
Do we have a phone number for him?
Alright.
Well, the other research, now the new two is now, especially with our cap limits, it, you know, whether or not this would even qualify or not.
Bonds would be excluded from the cap.
Right, but I'm just saying, just to outright mill it into a fund, if we could even do that, you'd also have to be cognizant of your, of your cap, if it would go against it, or, you know, and, cause there are some rules, like if you start a new fund or a new levy, within a certain amount of time, it doesn't go against your cap yet. And I mean, there's, there's a lot of angles, especially now that it's past August first, there's a bunch of new laws into effect too, so even just on top of the general, general research of just seeing if we can even do it, now you gotta wonder if it's a.
So how soon can we do that general research, cause, um, I, I gave you, and I didn't bring those names with me and I apologize for last one, that other counties have done this, there's at least five counties in the state of North Dakota that have given funds.
Well, I would suggest the Attorney General's opinion, so we won't get that for two years, so how, then Attorney General's opinion's a bad idea unless you wanna wait two years to get it, uh, so.
So Joe, the Capital Cratics Fund, you can go up to twenty mils with the majority of a vote, you wanna check that one out?
True.
To see if we could do that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we don't want, I, I think the majority of us would feel like we wanna support this project, but I, in my opinion, it's gotta be put to the vote of the people in the county.
I'm good with that, but is that something we could do as soon as possible? Because this applicant, I mean, what's the process?
It wouldn't happen until we have an election, let's be of a special.
So what I did in Nebraska is we had a special election.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, and, and the county said absolutely, this is, you, you need this fund, so they worked with a special election. And I can tell you, throughout the, the five-state region, I know a lot of them have gone to a special election because it was that important, you've been.
Well, it's definitely important, you know, yeah.
I was doing some look, uh, research here on this and I found this North Dakota constitution up on the screen, if everybody would like to read that, give me their opinion on what it says, if we can even do anything like that.
But, yeah, was to see other counties.
There's five other counties that have done it.
Yeah, I think the five-oh-one-C-three designation is probably what would be like the,
Exactly.
They need, well, you'd have to look and see if a five-oh-one-three, C-three qualifies as an individual association or a corporation, cause, I mean, that's obviously the reason why they have a five-oh-one-C-three versus a, you know, all these other different numbers, so. You know, that would be, I mean, those are the questions, like I said, can you put it to a vote, when can you put it to a vote? Can you even participate with a five-oh-one-C-three? Cause you don't need to vote if you can't do it with five-oh-one-C-three, like, I mean, those are kind of the levels of information. And then also, a lot of times, you find out those designations, but it might be capped at one mil or a mil and a half, so it might not even reach your two to three mil, well, like, that's the information you have to find and that's, you know, that's, would have to be researched, you know.
Special election and the cost, out of curiosity.
I'm searching the century code here, let me, um, I believe you gotta give a ninety days notice of election. And the cost would be, depends if I use the machines or not.
And what?
If I use the machines or not. If we use the voting machines, it's gonna be expensive, you know, ten grand maybe to.
Oh, boy.
Who would volunteer to counsel us?
You would?
He'd volunteer, he said he'd help the votes.
No. Well, I'm not gonna run anymore.
Just pray it helps out.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, and to be clear, I mean, anybody can do the research, it's a matter of the interpretation and the understanding of it too, so, I mean.
The best thing would be is to have it in June in the primary.
I'm, I'm sorry?
The best thing would be to do it in June and turn the primary election. I don't know, you wanna wait that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait that, I'll be honest.
I mean, even the care center can do that information seeking too, or if you have any legal counsel or someone that can look into it and give some precedent too, so.
I, I mean, it's not like. The long-term care, I know we're looking to it for us.
Right, that's what I, I mean, if, honestly, if, if this has already been established in other parts of the state, it shouldn't be very hard for like the Long Term Care Association to have somebody,
Yeah.
you know, dig up the precedent and the information and kinda bring it forward too, or at least get it to Joe so he can cross-reference with his references to see if that, you know, is something that could work.
If it can make it work.
Again, an Attorney General's opinion would be a great resource, but they're just, their response times, I mean.
Really, it's.
And now I'm not trying to even just pick on them, I'm sure they get inundated with requests too, but at the same time, it is a very slow process, it's not something you're gonna get two weeks, so, cause that would be a great resource too, cause if you had an Attorney General's opinion, at least, at least, you know, your likelihood of, you know, getting in trouble or something's gonna be reduced, cause you have an opinion from the Attorney General, but. Cause, you know, also, just because a county or city has done it, doesn't mean it's right, it just means they haven't gotten sued yet, if they're doing it wrong, I just, there is a level of that where just cause someone's done it, doesn't make it right, so. I mean, I mean, like I said, the Long Term Care Association would be a great resource, that would probably already know most of this information, would be able to give it to you probably a lot faster than even us, just, you know.
I can work on that.
That would be a suggestion, because that, that would answer at least enough, cause there's no point in trying to debate a special election or a ballot initiative.
Until we find out.
If you can't even participate, so.
Absolutely.
Good.
And so I'll try to, that way for us.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can be in contact with Marla, and then she can email us to keep us updated, so that we know what's going on.
Okay.
I hear us.
Okay. And Joe's State's Attorney here, you can.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you, guys, I greatly appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Glencoe fighter reimbursement.
What was our bill on that? Four dollars or something.
Forty-three or?
Yeah, I was gonna say around forty grand, I thought, but.
Four.
Four.
Four dollars.
Four thousand?
Yeah.
Well, was it totally?
The cost shared seventy, but the, the guard paid seventy, fired the state.
Okay, so that would be, yeah.
I think we're somewhere. Percentage.
Our share, our shares.
Our shares.
Yeah, but it was a lot more.
Yeah, it sounds like there's no recourse on it, the guys that started it.
Well, we could send them a milk or a sip.
Yeah, Mary Singer made it very clear, she felt like that should not be the bill of the citizens of this county.
Well, I agree totally with what she said, she said. From what I read, but, yeah, I mean, you'd have to go out from civil, you know, or.
It's really good, yeah.
I, I just feel like if this was fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen-year-olds, you could kinda turn a blind eye, cause kids will be kids, but these guys are twenty-seven years old at all, on fire department somewhere.
Should've known.
They were windy, it's dry, and you're shooting Tannerite, although it doesn't say that it's in, that it fits anything but fireworks. Anybody that's touched Tannerite knows that it makes a big boom and it blows stuff every direction, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
No. Yeah, I did.
It's a bomb.
Is it?
It's a bomb that's lit by a bullet, basically, I mean, it's, it's an explosive.
They do what they were doing.
Yeah, well.
Ignition accelerant.
Tannerite's awesome.
It is awesome.
Oh, yeah, Tannerite.
If used in the right situation, like getting ready for a beaver dam.
Even puts a fire.
It's about as much fun as a civilian can have, I tell you that, it's a good time.
No wind over ten miles and not.
Right, yeah, you need to be careful, yeah.
You could buy it.
Oh, yeah, buy the shields, like you used to, I haven't bought it in a long time, but.
You can get it everywhere.
It makes stuff go boom.
You can get it at Fleet Farm, they have a different brand, Tannerite is only one better, Fleet Farm's just kaboom or something like that, it's called.
So it's kaboom instead of.
It's just a dry powder in, in a container.
It's relatively inert, I mean, like, it's not as dangerous as probably like gunpowder and stuff, I mean, but it's, it's, yeah, you, you shoot, you shoot it with it.
You wouldn't walk up to it and light it.
You shoot it with an AR or something, it's, it'll go boom.
Yeah, it just, yeah, it just needs friction and.
It, it's like an accelerator, basically, it just needs an ignition source.
I mean, it was, it, let's just put it like this, if you're over twenty years old and you're blowing up Tannerite, you know exactly what you're doing.
Yeah. It would bad, the conditions are terrible.
Terrible drive.
Well, in that, I mean, how many fires have been put out in Glencoe bottoms? I mean, Gary, you've been in emergency service enough, that's a, that's a, that's a war zone for a fire and it seems like the biggest fires I can ever remember were always down at like the Glencoe bottoms.
It's so hard to get at it.
Yes.
Access.
It's, it's.
I mean, there was some definite poor judgment by some people that I would consider adults. My opinion, if you can vote, you're an adult, so if you, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm on board with Mary Singer, I don't believe that this should be a taxpayer.
No.
No.
I mean, I don't, I don't like to hang people up to drive, but sometimes you gotta use your head.
Well, didn't that happen out east there also? In some lake bottom with gettrus?
No, that was just, that was, uh, that was far, they were farming when that, that happened.
They started a lawyer, didn't they, in Fire Department?
There was not one in Emmens County, but that was actually in McIntosh County.
Almost good.
Yeah.
And they were working with, uh, equipment.
Yeah, they were working with equipment, they were farming, trying to.
That's a little different, a lot different, dude.
One, one of the elements, or Joe can, can highlight this, is recklessness or negligence, um, is what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Was it reckless, was it negligent, uh, to them to do what they were doing, knowing what everybody knew was going on and knowing that these guys are adults, they're also on the fire departments, um, so.
Yeah, I said they were both negligent and.
Well, they were certainly reckless, I mean, I mean, that's, that's even, in my opinion, um, you drive drunk, you're being reckless, it should take you off the hook for.
But, uh, yeah, so tho- those are the, the two things that we have to look at, or Joe would have to look at, and again, the dollar amount is, is false within that small claims area, small claims maximum amount is fifteen thousand, but that's something that, uh, you guys will have to decide. But that's something that, uh, you guys will have to decide, and talk to Joe about.
What would a process like that even look like?
Well, I think what I'd do is I'd probably just send them, uh, whoever the responsible individuals are, send them a, a letter, sort of detailing what, what, what we will do and the next steps, if they don't want to agree to some sort of payment plan. Give them the opportunity to, as more litigation.
I think that's a good idea, that's a good.
Yeah.
You got it all for it?
Otherwise, attach the court costs to it too.
Right, mm, so, then I'd probably give them a form that could sign, sort of accepting responsibility, setting aside, you know, a sort of a reasonable payment plan. I don't know what kind of fi- you know, financial situation these individuals are in, I think they're younger, so they might need some time, make a month of payments or something to the county, but if they agree to do that, I mean, I would, I would support that.
Yeah.
Was there some kind of like a fire report or police report or something that was like the, it's not just hearsay that it was a couple guys and some.
Yeah, it was an official report, I think the commission got a copy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, that would be something, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of where I'm going with that, it's just more so that, you know.
Let them know we have more that we could file, if it need be, as far as exhibits and witnesses and all that, I guess.
Right.
I mean, I give them credit for staying there, helping the fire department, and, uh, I mean, they, no, but if you read the report, they didn't, you know, they didn't run, and they didn't, they didn't hide away from it.
They didn't, they were cooperative, they, they were, they were the first to say, we, we messed up.
Yeah, they knew what to. Exactly, and, and that's where I think if we can give them the opportunity to pay it in payments without bringing the court into the system, you know, I, I mean, I'm sorry that when you make mistakes sometimes because of negligence, you have to, you know, you have to.
Yeah, there's a part of me that actually thinks that that's actually worse, the fact that they stayed and helped, because, I mean, growing up, I did actually know a guy that, turned eighteen, wanted to be on the fire department, and he used to always be the first one at the fire, so they found out he was the one lighting them. I'm, I'm just saying, like, you talk about a situation like this, if they were on the fire department, knowing it's dry, and they're out blowing off Tannerite, did they wanna start a fire? Like, I mean, you just gotta start, like, Gary knows what I'm talking about.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying, well, I'm just, he was, he was on scene all the time, man, you know, they found, figured it out after that, I was like, yeah.
Yeah, you know, well.
There was a reason why them fires were there, and.
Were you guys wearing a gear for it?
Is that sure being?
Right, I'm, I'm, like, I'm just saying, when you're like, well, they saved, helped fight the fire, I'm like, well, did they want to? I mean, I'm just, I'm not accusing of anything, but it just kind of, I think you're right in pursuing this, cause you know, you're going, well, maybe they were really negligent, maybe it was intentional, like.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I always wanna look at the good in people, so I wanna say, they realized they screwed up and they decided to stick around, not that they probably do much.
Well, I'm not. And again, I'm not accusing them.
I think the conclusion that pretty much those that were involved and so forth, it, it, a really lapse in, in poor judgment, you know, uh, again.
Yeah. That was real poor.
Right.
They didn't, they just, yeah, like, what were you thinking, and like, oh, I don't really know, you know, I mean, just, yeah.
Well, if you want that kind of stuff to stop.
And that happens.
They, they accepted responsibility and, and so forth, and, and they, they were the first to say, that was really stupid of us to, to do this, we did. Getting caught up in the moment, like, oh crap, you know.
Yeah, once it started, they couldn't reverse it.
Yeah, but they are to have burned out. Well, I.
That would've been terrible, man.
You need a vote or something like that to pursue that, or?
Not really, I suppose if I'm gonna actually file a case, I'll probably update you next month.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully we can keep it out of the courts and then decide to do a payment plan or something.
So we don't get voted for the whole. Yeah. Yeah.
I agree, I don't, I don't think it's, I mean, there's enough on the taxpayers' plate on, on the other stuff, and there's plenty of accidents, but you got stuff like that going on purpose, I mean, that, you wanna curb that behavior, you gotta have some kind of repercussion for some of that stuff, so.
Be, uh.
Okay.
Okay. So much of that.
Yep.
Great step discussion.
Who's stepping up to play?
Who's gonna be speaking on that?
I guess I can come up here, I don't see Michelle here, if you wanna.
We can, I mean, I don't think we're supposed to talk about that till nine forty-five, Michelle will show up in the next ten minutes.
We can wait.
Stuff to get.
We can go on the missed ways if you want, we can go down together, yeah? I suppose, you wanna go down to the missed ways and wait till nine forty-five?
Yeah, all right, Gary.
Huh?
We can do an animation.
One animation, go ahead, yeah. Oh. Do I have to slap you? Okay, sure.
Pretty dark outside.
Go ahead. We could do something with the ways if you wanna wait on that step, right, you?
Michelle's on her way up.
Huh?
Michelle's on her way up, okay, go this way, she shows up in a minute, yeah.
It's quite a rumble.
Yeah.
This is a pretty good old heavy building, if this blows away, there's gonna be a lot of them, god, this is out. And we haven't had a lot this little last year, you know?
Well, we've got a lot of fire, yeah.
Sounded a lot of thunderstorms. Crops look good. All the rope cots look good, beans are, oh, they're really nice, and some nice corn. Yeah. Did you get your new vehicle, Gary? Sure.
Yeah, I gotta call and find out what's going on with it, I have no idea. That's, that's it, now they, you just don't know when you're gonna get any stuff.
You know, you know, they tell you this, but it might be three months, four months later.
How's the new young man working out?
What's that?
How's the new guy working out?
Good. He's in the, uh, two week academy right now, this week, next week.
Go ahead, Gary, if you wanna take it, it's yours.
What's that?
If you wanna speak, it's yours in the center.
Michelle was gonna.
Michelle's right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I gave you guys some updates, um, they're, they should've been this morning, I gave you guys a copy, so. Noticed a couple errors that were in my mail.
Current documents?
I don't know if I have any of those.
Yeah, good.
I don't wanna go.
That's gonna look, cause he kind of.
I think it's a, yeah, it should be, yeah, the type of regular initial. That's what we can.
Oh, did she change that again?
Um, don't you?
I don't know.
Cause this one I don't have.
Okay.
Cause that's the one that you have, go back. We've had someone already, you guys need to float around, sorry, we're just making sure we have the right one.
Okay, we're ready, I guess, um, I'll give you guys a little backstory, so back in, let me grab some notes here. The fall of twenty twenty-four, uh, the county commission, it's been talked about, it's been in the works for at least, what, two, a year and a half, maybe close to two years. We had worked with a previous, uh, human resource officer, Pam Binder, when she was working for the county, to start this process. And she provided kind of the blueprint for us to work on, and through that process, this thing has changed multiple times, um, we've had meetings, and, at the request of the county commission, a working group was put together, uh, consisting of myself, Michelle Moss, with Social Services, Director of Social Service, and our auditor, Marla's, Old Houseer. In addition to that, we've included two commissioners to be part of that, which were, uh, Commissioner, um, uh.
James.
What's that?
Philadelphia, Gary.
Yeah, please, yeah.
James Carter.
Yeah, it's been a long couple of days here, but anyway, uh, we had two commissioners appointed to that also, and through that, we came up with this document. Um, is it perfect? No, it's not perfect, it's, it's, it's what we thought would come up with that would fit what we're looking for, to try and come up with a solution to have some consistency, in the past, Emmens County's had a problem with not being consistent when hiring people. And that's in any department, there was no guidelines, there was no standardization, um, numbers, you know, there was no rhyme and reason for starting salaries and so forth, so this provides, a standardization and some guidelines for when hiring someone for the county, in any, in any agency, in any department. And that's kind of where we came up with, and more recently, we just kind of finalized this thing, and it's a grade and step, uh, structure, uh, for the county to follow. Along with what we came up with was a couple of different documents, we came up with the, uh, guidelines, which is this document here, uh, for the commission to consider, and these are proposals, nothing is, nothing what we decided, or nothing that we came up with is permanent. This is all contingent on the commission accepting this or tweaking this, um, so it, it, it falls on your guys' lap, where we go. This is our recommendation for you guys, it's your guys' request, but the guidelines that we've set forth is a three page document, and in that document, it describes what the purpose of a pay grade is, that's assigned to any and every position in the county. And some of the things that take into consideration for someone's pay grade is the position that they have, is an elected official, is an appointment, is it just a, a regular employee? Uh, job description, what is the job description of that position? Um, does it require a proper licensing certification, um, things like that, yeah, are they a supervisor or non-supervisor position? What are the requirements of that position, is it something that requires criminal background checks, because it's a position of sensitivity or access to cer- to certain, uh, sensitive information? And what is their authority level? Um, again, if you're in a managerial type position, supervision type position, or an elected official, your level of authority is going to be different. And, uh, the other thing that we looked at was the budget and financial responsibility of the position, is this a position that oversees a budget, manages a budget, and so forth? So those are the things that take into consideration when assigning a grade to a certain position. Then we looked at the steps, uh, some of the things that we considered before the step and consideration. One of the things that Emmens County's never really had is, is, um, uh, something in place for longevity. When you have an experienced employee that's been here ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, they gain a lot of knowledge and experience that you just, only those that have been here for years experience that, I experienced that firsthand, and I lost my, uh, uh, administratorial, administrative assistant, Tina Weber, who had forty-two years of experience, we still call on her for certain things, cause that knowledge, it's, it's hard to, uh, it, it is. And one of the problems we had in past was, somebody that's been here forty years, and somebody that's been here six months, started at the same page level. There was no consideration for that longevity and that knowledge and that experience, and I think that can go with the safe for any position, whether you're a, a, working in the road department, and you're a blade operator, somebody that's got ten years of experience, knows where things are at, knows how things work, and plus, has that finesse on that equipment to get the job done versus somebody that's just starting. Um, there's a big difference there, I mean, one requires a lot more supervision than someone that doesn't have the experience versus someone that does. Um, we also looked at prior experience and determined somebody's step. Uh, when they're coming into the county employment, do they have prior experience, it's relative, uh, to the position they're gonna have here, okay? Um, same thing with any prior training, again, is it relative to the position they have here? And then education or a degree, um, is it relative to, again, the position that they hold with, with Emmens County? Um, we looked at that, to determine your years of service or your, your step placement, so. One of the things we also considered was, any department head that's looking at hiring a new employee, they should consider hiring that new employee, um, at a step one through a step four, okay? Somebody coming in at a, in a, in a position, in any position with zero experience, possibly a step one or a step two. Versus somebody that's coming in with some prior experience and prior training, maybe you wanna start them at a step four, okay? Uh, and if the department head is looking at offering a job to someone above a step four, the prior approval to the county commission has to be met, and justification has to be met. Okay, and then you guys would have the final say, um, okay, we can start this guy at a step six, but I think it needs to be justified, if you're gonna go outside the guidelines, okay? Anything else on that?
No, you covered it well, thank you.
So one of the other documents that we got here, uh. I, the.
This one?
Do I not have that, or do you have that?
I don't, I just have what I have.
So the other documents that we've got are these here, okay, there's two documents, one document is for a forty hour a week employee, which would consist of the, uh, road department, the sheriff's office, and maintenance department here at the courthouse. The other document is a thirty-seven and a half hour a week, is, which is the standard work week for all of the county employees at the courthouse here, for the most part, in the offices. And the two columns that you have, they're, in, in whichever document you look at, the top column here is their annual salary, the bottom column is an hourly rate, because even if you're salaried employee, that salary is based on an hourly rate, I don't care how you slice it, how you look at it, everybody's salary is based on an hourly rate, so we broke it down into two columns, and they're actually identical, so if you look at it, grade six, step six, annual salary, and that, down below, is broken down to what their hourly rate would be, so it just depends, because you have some employees that are hourly rate, most of the road department, if not all the road department, is hourly, and most other employees are salaried, okay? This also establishes a better look, when you look at somebody's hourly rate versus salary, I think we get caught up on what somebody's hourly, or annual salary is. You really need to look at what the hourly rate is, to get a clear picture of what their salary is. Again, somebody working forty hours a week versus somebody working thirty-seven and a half hours a week, if you look strictly at their annual salary, salary, it, it doesn't break it down to the hour, you got one working forty hours a week, and one working thirty, thirty-seven and a half, so there's gonna be a discrepancy, there's gonna be a difference. Versus if you look at it just at the annual salary, you're not taking that into consideration, that one person's working forty hours a week, and the other's working thirty-seven and a half. And to put that in perspective, thirty-seven and a half hours a week comes up to nine, one thousand nine hundred and fifty hours, okay? A forty hour a week employee works two thousand and eighty hours a week, okay, that's the difference.
Are there a lot of department heads here that only work forty hours a week?
No, most department heads.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that sarcastically, but my point being that even a lot of times, when you look at your hourly rate, that's based on forty hour a week for some, for some.
Right. Yeah. Right, exactly, and you have, yeah.
But, we know, we know well that the sheriff's department, Marla's during elections especially, tax time, I'm sure you have scenarios, Michelle, I'm on that board, I know you do.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Same with Robin's office, Russ, you guys are the fill-ins when there's short, you're the fill-ins when there's circumstances, so.
Yeah.
And we're exempt employees, and department heads are exempt, so.
Exactly. That's my point, so even if, if it displays that you're seven dollars an hour higher than your next department, and that's only if you work forty hours, so most months, you're probably making less than that.
Right, and again, you have. There's, there's several factors, you looked at that, so we have exempt employees, which are, uh, all elected officials and most department heads, okay, if not all department heads. Uh, and again, they're exempt from overtime and so forth, now, that's not to say that they're not eligible for overtime if they request it, because there's some type of occasion circumstances that are beyond their control. Uh, you know, severe weather, uh, natural disasters, um, I'll use the flood of two thousand nine here, that, I mean, uh, for about two weeks, I ran out of about two hours of sleep for two weeks, um. That's just an itch or the beast, now, that's not to say that overtime can't be paid for when something like that happens, but it's gotta be requested and be considered by the county commission before that occurs. Okay, it's on a case by case basis, basically, um, whereas your standing employee is, is open to overtime after that forty hour a week work week, so.
As a caveat though, there's also an expected level of extra.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, at, at the same time, you know, Russ and Gary, you guys are maybe expected to put in that extra time, and that's maybe why your salary slightly, I mean, I'm saying,
Right, and then.
Not saying you're overpaid, right, but there's an expected level of extra, which is maybe kind of figured in your salary, but.
It needs to be, yeah, it should be.
It's, it's a give and take on the salary.
It is, it is, I mean, those are things that have to be considered, when you look at any department head or any type of official that is tall in that category, there is gonna be most, a lot of weeks where you're gonna put in way more than forty. Uh, I, I can attest, I think my staff can attest, I usually work pretty much a lot more than my staff does in any given week, and Marla's can say the same for her office, and so forth, that's, comes with, with the position, and we accept that, um, but again, considering those salaries for those positions, that needs to be considered, I mean, salary said that they are gonna work more, because of the requirement, and they're not, they're exempt employee, uh, from overtime and so forth.
And I, I only said that not to offend anybody, but that even taking a department head position, an elected position.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
The acceptance of the fact that you are paid a salary with the expectation, you're probably gonna go over and above your employees, you should expect, now, there's fine line to where it's like, okay, this is maybe too far, but,
Correct, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But everybody should be kind of a healthy acceptance that forty hours is kind of the minimum, really, I, so.
Exactly, so, yeah.
I was just gonna say a couple things just on the forty hour and thirty seven, and that. I was just gonna say a couple of things just on the forty hour and thirty-seven and a half hour. On this document... Oh, sorry. On this document, every step is two percent difference. So I believe that you guys had adopted, or the commission had adopted, one a couple of years ago for the road department. When we looked at that, and that's kind of how the basis of this developed, there was so much discrepancy in between each step. One step might be one point eight percent, the next step was three percent, the next step was two and a half percent. There was no consistency in between each step. So we decided to make it consistent and do two percent between each step. Forty, thirty-seven and a half, and forty.
They have binder, I remember, right? Was she upset at that time?
I believe so. I believe so. I wasn't a part of a lot of those discussions, but I believe, yeah. And then the other piece that I just wanted to talk about is that the COLA and these steps are different. They're not the same. When a COLA, if the commission gives a COLA, these, the documents for thirty-seven and a half and forty hours a week, this is a living document. So when a COLA is given, we can take those amounts and we can plug them into this spreadsheet, and it automatically changes everything to that standard two percent across the board. So the document's really nice that we have that flexibility to input those numbers, and it just changes everything, so it's consistent.
And like Michelle said, there's two percent change between each step. And, you know, something like this is pretty common in the workplace. In most jurisdictions, they have something like this set up already, so there's some type of guideline to follow. And like you said, it's a living document. So as time goes on, this document here will change with any cost of living increases that are given over the year. You don't have to go back and reinvent it. It's a living document. It will change as far as that goes, so...
Basically, COLAs for the commissioners to grant, steps and grades are usually department heads.
Well, recommended by them, yeah.
Well, you get what I'm saying, though. Like, that's where your internal promotions and qualifications are usually coming from you. The commissioners are generally deciding the cost of living.
And there is no step increase if an employee is eligible. And I want to stress the word eligible for a step increase. It's not a guarantee. You know, it is basically up to the county commission, you know, during the budget cycle, whether there's gonna be increases here. And you guys have to make those decisions based on financial situations of the county, availability of funds, or things like that. You know, if an employee is on probationary status or there's been disciplinary action taken against that, that employee may not be up for an increase, even though we have some guidelines to follow when they're eligible for an increase. If work performance is poor and there's some other issues, they may forfeit that right for that eligibility for that thing. There's that incidental case. You just don't give it to an employee just for work performance and so forth. It's not a guarantee.
That's where I got it from.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not an entitlement.
It's not an entitlement.
The grade and step programs...
It's not against anyone. It's just not an entitlement.
It's not an entitlement, yeah.
But that's really departmental, that was my point. Like, you're the one that knows, and you give your recommendations in your budget based on where you see your employees and their grades and steps.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying the commissioners couldn't maybe disagree with that in some way, shape, or form, but your budget is built on your grade and steps where you're deciding where your employees are at or they've met the qualifications you or the county has established for increased training, certifications, whatever. Like, that's where our job is to blanket that with what we believe should be an increase as a whole, not to just individuals. That's my department head's job, just to be clear on that.
Yes.
We're not gonna be sitting here going, well, this guy needs to be a... That's not really our job. That's gonna go from you guys.
Right. The department head should be doing that and bringing that justification forward. Like, this is why I feel they need a step or two-step increase, whatever.
Really, that's only to defend in your budget, though. Like, I mean, unless there was something outside of a budget cycle, you'd come to a meeting. But most of the time, that work is done, and we're not even really gonna know about it in a sense. It's gonna be in the form of your budget.
Right.
Right.
None of these changes would take effect, they would only take effect during the budget cycle. So it's nothing mid-year, nothing like that. It would be proposed, it's like we're going through the budget cycle today, and finalized in October for the following year. So nothing would take effect until the new budget cycle takes effect.
And I just feel, excuse me, I just feel with this three percent cap that we as department heads and all in the commission are gonna have to really tighten this to see where we're at.
There's no question what state legislators did with that three percent cap. It's really gotten monkey things up on the local level. I think statewide, especially, I think it hurts more in the small rural counties than it does the larger metropolitan areas for various reasons. But that's something for the county auditor to get into, and she's probably got some information before we add on.
We'll be okay.
This year?
So she can, yeah, she can, we briefly...
I, you know...
Those are the commissioners paying us.
Yeah, they're good ones, yeah.
Yeah, right.
That was the first number, wasn't it?
First thing on the list, you just got yourself...
Take the low-hanging fruit first, so...
But, yeah, I think, you know, I think anything is, and we've had this discussion. We know that financial constraints are always an issue. That's always right. And we all have to be good stewards of the taxpayer funds. If, at the very least, I feel very strongly that the commission really needs to consider adopting the platform that we've provided you. Excluding any proposed increases, excluding whatever the financial price tag of this is, but at least incorporating this graded pay going forward at a minimum. Again, and then you guys will have to look at the financial cost, if there's one for that during this budget cycling for consideration as far as that goes. But we need to, we've been kicking this can down the road for three, four, or five years, and we need to put something in place. Things are always changing, you know, department heads, employees, statuses are always changing, hiring, people are leaving, coming in, and we need something in place for this guideline for everybody.
It's an insistence, consistency.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, our recommendations, our proposals to the county, if there's an employee, if there's a department head that doesn't agree with this document or so... I mean, that's for them then to bring it to the county commission to work those differences out. These are just recommendations.
Recommendations by you guys.
That's what it is, so... The last document, yeah, is this document here. This is a list of all the MS County employees. It basically gives their names, the position that they hold, the agency they're with, what is their monthly salary, hourly rate, annual salary, whether they're an exempt or non-exempt employee, whether they're full-time or part-time, what their current grade and step, what our recommendation is. And we did that by looking at their current salary, looking at the position, and trying to then go to this document and line up where they would fit into this, okay? Best we could. And what we did is we rounded everything up. Nobody's position, nobody's status, we rounded down everything, rounded up. If it fell in the middle between these things, because we have to use these numbers. If this is the document we're going to use for hourly or salary rates, we have to stay within these numbers. So if their current position didn't quite line up with a certain grade and step or a grade step, maybe in between a step five and a step six, we rounded up to step six. Okay, we always rounded up, we didn't round down. And we went from there. And then in the blue column, proposed grade and step, this is what we're proposing going into new budget year, what their proposed grade and step would be. Again, based on a couple of factors, maybe based on their current salary, maybe based on years of longevity in the county. And the next column, we have years of service. We, as you can see in that column of years of service, we've got a lot more employees with less than ten years of service with the county versus those that have more than ten. You got a few of them that got twenty or more years of service. So going forward, in the notes column, what we decided as a committee was those that have ten years or more of service with the county, debunk them up four steps to try and get them where we thought they needed to be. We knew there's a financial price tag with that. We didn't think that if you've been here for twenty years, you should get eight, nine, ten steps. Financially, that's not gonna make sense. You have to be realistic about this. So what we decided was anybody with ten years of service or more, recommend a four-step increase, okay? Whether you've been here thirty years or ten years, we're just gonna give you four, recommend four-step increase. For anybody that was here for two years to ten years of service, a one-step increase, okay? If you were here less than a year, no increase for longevity purposes. You've just been here, you might even be on probationary status trying out if you've been here less than a year or just finished up your probationary status, as far as that goes. And when it comes to the benefits, part-time employees, what we decided was to continue doing what the county has always done, and that is benefits for part-time employees are always prorated based on the percentage of full-time status. You have some employees that are fifty-three percent, you know, part-time status, one that's eighty percent, one that's anywhere between fifty and sixty percent, twenty percent.
No, I'm sorry, fifty percent.
Fifty percent. I mean, some of our part-time employees, again, based on how many hours of work, hours a week they work is based on a percentage of full-time status. And there are benefits, whether that's healthcare, sick time, vacation time. All those benefits are prorated based on their percentage that they're employed here. So if you're a fifty percent employee here, your benefits are earned at fifty percent, okay? Your healthcare, your sick time, your vacation time is all at fifty percent. And we just wanted to keep that the same, not start opening up a can of worms and going in a different direction for this step increase, which is a benefit. So it would all be prorated. And again, if anybody has an issue or feels it's not right, they can bring it to the commission and argue that and advocate for something different, but this is the recommendation.
Something else we talked about, looking at years of service and new employees starting. We looked at, within the first three years, we had kind of changed it, but within the first three years for retention, you can move up a step, providing work is, you know, you're doing your work, you're doing a good job. And then after that three year, so starting the fourth year, every other year, you could move up one step. Just again, for that retention piece, when we get people, we wanna keep them. And so, as in our chart shows, we've had a lot of newbies coming in. And so, because we've had a lot of retirements, but before that, they did stick around. So just an incentive for people. We also need to watch that and make sure, because we also don't want the new ones coming in to make more than those ones that, yes, so we don't wanna do that. So that's why we had originally thought five years, and after looking at it, we thought, ooh, that might be a little bit too much. So we dropped it to three years for that step. And I think we'll be okay with that when we looked at it. So that's just something for retention and longevity.
So for the first three years, so for the first three years of a new employee's status with the county, they're eligible for a step increase, the first three years. After the third year, their fourth and subsequent year, every other year, they're eligible for a step increase.
Every other year?
Yes.
Exactly. So this documents were sent out to you guys, and we'll be at a chance to go through it, and I will encourage you to read it. Again, if you need, if anything needs clarification, just reach out to one of us, Marla's, myself, or Michelle, for clarification, and we'll try and do that. Hopefully, you know, every time we review this thing, it seems like we catch a typographical error or something, and we change it. If that happens, that's all part of the process. But like I said, it's not perfect, but I think it's the best thing we've come up with based on, when you're dealing with fifty-some employees, it's hard to come up with something. Everybody's gonna agree with this, so... And again, if anybody doesn't agree with any employee, any department head, any elected official, they can argue that with the commission or advocate for a change or something different, and you guys have a final word on that, so...
Marla's, what did we put in for a COLA for the preliminary budget?
We didn't do anything.
We didn't?
Right.
I wanted you guys to tell me today if you wanted to adopt this.
Okay.
I'll put this into the budget. If not, if you wanna do a four percent or whatever.
Okay.
A preliminary, I'm still waiting for another budget to come in, but I worked last night on that three percent cap calculation, and I think we're gonna be okay. Just have some minor adjustments to make, yeah, but...
I mean, because in your proposal here, you guys have a four percent COLA without a grade and step.
Yes.
Then you have a grade and step without longevity. Then you have the proposed grade and step, which I'm assuming includes the longevity. So obviously, the proposed grade and step is gonna be the highest increase. I guess my opinion would be we put the proposed in the preliminary and see where it lands. Because that would at least finalize what we want to do with pay scale. If it doesn't reach, or we have to do some cutting, then maybe we could look at doing the grade and step without longevity and see if that would at least match the budget. I think our overall goal should be to try and get to the grade and step. I think they've done the legwork to work it out. The department heads have been involved. I'm sure it's not perfect, but it's a heck of a lot closer than anything we've had. And so rather than, because even the grade and step without longevity is lower than the four percent COLA. So we're looking at probably a pretty realistic scenario, even if we can't incorporate the longevity, to at least get the grade and step. And then maybe next year, we try and incorporate the longevity or something. But I think, I think as a board, we should be trying to match this grade and step. I think it makes the most sense. It creates some clarity. The next department head moving into the next department does not try and figure out what to pay their people because we're already trying to rule some of that out. And even as commissioners, trying to figure out why this person gets an extra dollar an hour because you can't recruit some, well, you have to create a system. They've done, most of the legwork, it looks like it makes sense. I think probably go for the highest proposal just to see where it lands and then scale it back from there to match a budget.
And that was one of the, part of the process. We wanted to have Marla's put those figures together because, again, there's a financial price tag with everything. And going into this budget cycle, none of us know where that's gonna land because there's so many variables that we're trying to iron out with these new laws and this three percent cap and everything else, and it's a work in progress and...
But I mean, the grade and step without longevity is actually less than a four percent cost of increase. So, I mean, it's a reasonable request, even without the longevity, like financially. It's not like it's a, I mean, with the longevity, yeah, it does increase, you know, like the overall budget looks like roughly, from current, it's probably seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's for the entire courthouse. You know, but really, when you look at it compared to a, if you would do even a three percent cost of living, the difference is only about twenty thousand bucks, thirty thousand bucks. It's not, it's not huge. Like, I don't think it's really a budget breaker. Like, you might not be able to include the longevity if that is, but I still think in the grade and step is actually the most reasonable increase.
I love it. It'd be a lot cheaper.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. Common sense in my mind is to put all this effort into the grade and step and then not to adopt it would be kind of foolish. So I think at a minimum, without the longevity, I think that would be a smart move and then look for just incorporating longevity in the future. I think if we throw all this work away, it's never gonna happen again. We're gonna be back to square one, which...
I hear you guys are good at it.
Yeah, you guys have done great. I think that's very well...
A lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of work.
And looking at the names and salaries, just from the people that I know, I don't see anything drastically unfair. There may be a couple little discussions, but you're always gonna have that, I think, as a whole. I think this is a very fair assessment of experience at department heads, and I think it's very good. I think you guys did great.
Thank you.
So, yeah, if no further questions, look at the documentation again. If somebody needs clarification on something, please reach out to us, and we'll try and clarify as best we can. Same thing with any department head. I mean, something quite doesn't make under, or they don't quite understand something, just have them ask us, and try and work through it.
We did present this to all the department heads individually.
Yeah.
And how did that go over good?
Good. I think so, yeah.
And again, you know, there's, again, it's not the perfect document, but it's a starting point for us. And it's not to say that it can't be tweaked again or a little bit of adjustment if we're there, but it's a starting point.
Sounds good, Ray.
Well, I guess I would suggest, or I don't know, do you wanna vote on it or... I guess my suggestion would be to, you know, if you're looking for what to put for finalized preliminary wages, I would suggest using the proposed grade and step and just see how the budget looks from the final date. And then if we have to scale back, we have some options where we're still not grenading the plan.
This isn't stone. This is something that...
Right, this is just a proposal for you guys to consider. And again, you guys have to make, you make the final decision. And there may be some departments that come in and say, we wanna make some changes. Again, you guys will have to consider that and finalize that at your, one of your meetings here. But I think at the very least, like we talked about, at least incorporating a grade and step process. Regardless of what any numbers tell you, incorporating the process of having something, a standardized, you know, policy.
Just a format, I guess.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and I think one thing, just to kind of finalize everything, though, is like you just said, this isn't set in stone. What I mean is even if it's set in stone for this year,
Right.
it's a working process. Like, I don't want everybody to look at this and be like, well, my wage isn't fair. Well, maybe your wage is one of those outliers that needs to be reconsidered.
Exactly.
But I don't think you alienate the entire process because maybe a couple positions might have got misvalued. I don't, I think overall, the goal is to just continue this in a process that's a lot easier to amend than just chicken scratching every department individually. So just as a word to the other employees... I wouldn't take just super offense if you don't quite agree to it.
Right.
The goal, the goal is to just be equitable and move forward, so let's, let's remember that when we look at this document, that it's probably not perfect, but it's as good a thing as I've seen, so.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. So do we want to do a vote on this here amongst the commissioners to accept this? Or do you want to wait until next month?
No, I, I, I think Marles is gonna, I don't think we can approve anything unless we know it'll fit a budget. So I think the biggest thing is just that we agreed to go with the proposal.
The proposed format.
If it fits and it matches, we make that decision probably at the final budget meeting.
Okay.
In, in, that we're gonna move forward probably January one, or, or, you know, with that plan, because I, I think if we approve something and it don't match the budget, then we're gonna do it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Russ Lawler, you're up next to speak.
Could I have just one second on that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, at our, at our last meeting, you had asked me to, you had asked me to bring in my proposal for, based on the grading step for my department, and I've got that ready now, or do you want me to wait until the next meeting? Do, I can just hand it out to you, you guys can decide.
Yeah, I think we'll just check it out and see if it's something that we want to incorporate.
This is just what I'm proposing for my department, basically.
Okay, okay. Is there one for everybody?
Yeah, yeah, there's one for everybody.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Morning, Russ.
Morning, guys.
Hi, Russ.
I guess just here, just a little update, uh, we're out there blading, uh, the roads and stuff like that, the roads that we can. Got a couple guys on vacation, so some of the areas probably ain't seeing a blade like they would like to and stuff, but working through it the best we can. Um, been doing some graveling. Uh, we started out kind of in the south, southwest part of the county, been working earlier on. We're actually out there this morning on Tenth Avenue, and we did start on that last night accordingly. This morning, they said they got a little shower or something, so they backed off and they're back out west here doing some odds and ends on some different roads, but as of the thing, by this week, we should, if Mother Nature lets us go here, we should be up in the Woolbaum pit by next week sometime. And then we'll be taking gravel from there out to the west end of Hazelton to try and address some of them roads. Confederate irony as well, so.
Have you been out to the Woolbaum pit recently?
No.
Okay, I talked to Kenny Woolbaum Thursday, and that road was underwater most of the summer. The, the road going into that.
Where he did that.
You might want to send someone up there just with a vehicle, just to see what it looks like, that if it needs a little blading or something, I mean, because it's, because there, because I asked Kenny if he'd been moving any material out of there, and then he just laughed, and I thought that was coming with something. He said that, that's been, there's been portions of that trail going into the pit have been basically underwater.
When they placed that, that would be.
Well, yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, just, I would go check it out, because he just mentioned that on Thursday or Friday, if that's why.
Because I talked to Gar here, I don't know, maybe a month ago, when he had been in there, and he said he bladed all the way in and stuff, just to straighten it up, but it.
They had a couple big shots rain the last like two to three weeks though, and then he said there's been few times where it might have been dried up when Gar went, but it's probably rained a bit since then, I'd just check it out.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know, I'll do that before we.
Thanks for getting up to tenth.
What's that? Before you send guys up there?
Yeah, I just don't, because Kenny, like I said, Kenny's the one that just mentioned it, because I had asked him, and then, uh, thanks for getting to tenth, because that was, that was bad up there, so.
Yeah, there's a few, and we did that whole culvert road as well, kind of culvert in there and stuff like that. We've been trying to mix that stuff, some areas are working better than others, there's no doubt, you know, so it's still kind of a work in progress, but it does seem to help different gravel in different areas. It's probably not a complete fix, but.
The Tenth Road's been a big improvement.
Yeah. Is it?
Big improvement.
Okay.
More noticeable.
And that was an ugly spot.
That was, and there's a lot of them in the county, we have a lot of hilltops, a lot of it just stretches into roads that just, they turn to mud for some reason.
Yeah, no gravel there.
Yeah, and a lot of the guys, the operators, you talk to them, and they say, well, we just traveled it last year or a year before, and some reason, some of the areas just disappear constantly, so it's just.
Sixty-seventh Street out, off of eighteen oh four, has anybody been out there to look or not? How's that holding up on that hill?
Sixty-seventh.
That's gonna be like Horsemire Hill out there, right, or?
Uh, Bridge of Gallic's area.
Yep. Yeah, by the old Horsemire place.
And that's gonna be the area we're going to, kind of the Woolbaum pit is where we're gonna start from that area, you know?
That's an ugly hill.
Yeah, the back in there by Leo Woolbaum, is that whole area back in there, it's been neglected for a long, long time, so we'll probably be putting a lot of loads in there again, it's, it's a long ways to drive, so you don't want to get
It doesn't happen overnight.
Five, six loads a day per truck, so I mean, it's, but that's what we have to do to try and make it work, I guess. But yeah, like Joey Culver's area way up in there, that stuff's all been in needed gravel for, for quite a few years, you know?
I've heard a lot of complaints from the bridge being built up there by St. Lucius Church, that new bridge, when they haul the material in and out of there, meaning the contractors, they just destroyed. That road coming out and going north up to Highway thirteen, have you been on it?
I have, I guess, I don't.
Is it that bad, or is it just chalk? I mean, people look at things totally different from.
Yeah, right.
From one another.
I mean, there's been days they've been in and out, they took a crane out of there one time when it was wet, just after a rain, stuff like that, but.
It's not destroyed.
I don't think it is, I mean.
Bladed out.
How are they coming along with that, laid back, hauling dirt?
To my knowledge, no, there, there was a delay from the contractor to the, they subbed out, uh, the dirt work side of it to a different guy or a different company. And there's, I don't know if they're on another job or something like that, but it was gonna be all against something, I think, when they got back, if what John Martin had said, something like that, I believe.
Because Sayer, is it Dylan? I think they're furnishing the clay.
Okay.
Office somewhere.
Build somewhere.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was told, is there merit to that? I don't know.
I, that's, I guess that's their, who's ever doing the project isn't entitled or taking care of all that stuff, that's all incorporated with, uh, with the bridge deal.
Yeah, you want to report, you want to say something in regards to when we met with Martin, with Russ and you and I?
Or with flex funding?
Do we need to talk about that, or not? Probably not, huh?
I mean, we, we just met about, uh, flex funding application and what, and what, um, what we felt like. And then it was basically Russ and, and John, what they, John Ibach, and what they felt were the best, um.
Ones to pick?
Yeah, the best opportunities, you know, everything is based on, um, a, a share by the county and that, that, that moves you up the list if you do, you know, your low, medium, or high, based on what you're willing to give. So we tried to get into the medium category on most everything, we did do a high category on one, and then uh, Russ and John were gonna pick five bridges. My recommendation was, we don't have any criticals, so take the five highest out of the ten that we have, they're gonna score the highest, so we have an opportunity to try to get, they're two that had load restrictions on.
Right.
And, uh, Martin decided that was John, that we should probably put those two on the list for sure, because they have a, uh, a load restriction. And then I think it was just picking three more that probably would rank the highest to try to get us into money. Yeah, and that was basically what the meeting was about, just kind of discussing some stuff like that, so.
Other than that, uh, Dave Ellingson's running around doing some culverts, um, we're nipping away at him, we got, got a lot to do. So I mean, there's a lot of requests from people, stuff like that, which we do know about most of them. But it does help when people call in and say whatever as well, because some of them get missed, some of them, they don't even know, or they're, they're just completely buried in the road, you know, so.
Yeah, thanks for doing what you did for us, too, but I reached out here.
Yeah, and like I said, he's, he's going around and doing, doing the ones that he can and stuff like that, and there's Dave, John goes out and helps as well to him accomplish stuff like that, or who's ever, so.
Has there been any more, uh, where they, they've been undercut in the center, where they've been kind of collapsing out like we had earlier in the year?
No, that was just through the heavy rains that they showed up, you know, but, uh, most of them have been taken care of.
Some areas have had pretty heavy rains all summer long, like Stroudburg itself, and.
Right.
So nothing has, nothing else has showed up?
Yeah.
I did meet, uh, Dave Ellingson there one day, he was using his port of power to open the culvert, so that's a good idea, that saves a lot of money for the taxpayers.
It did, that was one that had been driven over and crushed down just on the end, it was a good culvert and stuff, and he, he went out there and has it looking pretty good, he's, he's doing a really good job on that stuff.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, well, dude was the kind of guy who just said, you know, get her done.
He is, he's a, yeah, he's kind of an all-around guy, so it's good to have people like that. And that's pretty much all I got, I guess.
The tar tank was talked about, did somebody want to address that too, about this tar tank that we've got out there?
Well, just that we had talked before about maybe not knowing where it was from and things like that, so Skylar reached out to me. That tank got bought on Purple Wave from a county in South Dakota.
Okay.
And then, um, the reason the burners were in pieces, because that's how they did dismantle it, to haul it, so that's why, you know, some of that. It was intact when we bought it, and then it had to get kind of tore down a little bit to haul, so, um.
And he offered to help out there?
Well, he just said that if somebody wanted to reach out, he would help any way he could with trying to remember how it went, or if he had any names of people like from that other colony, because they were pretty open. Kind of helping out too, so Skylar said if you guys wanted to put it together, you, you know, if you guys wanted to call him, you'd be able to just help out any way you can, because we thought overall, we probably had about five or six grand into it total with the, this is what he remembered, I did the check with Marcy on the receipts, but he said it was pretty reasonable for what we got that tank for, and then as far as putting it back together, at least the heating part, he was gonna reach out to like Prairie or Gray Hooman and see if they could help out with it, because there was quite a bit of money to buy a new one, so that's why they went this route, so.
Right.
Even if you have to stick some money in to get it going, it was far cheaper than buying one, but. So anyway, that's just the information that he gave me on it, so.
Okay.
You know, going forward with that. Um, only other thing I gotta bring up is that you've been hauling a lot of gravel, a lot of Vandermoor's pit, and that road's getting kind of beat up, I don't know if you plan on putting a blade on it soon or anything, just.
We've been trying to stay with it, we actually took despair blade out this morning.
Okay.
And then when I'm done here, that's weather permitting, I'm going out to actually blade it, but.
Yeah, I was on it last night, and just, you could just tell that, I mean, we were pretty much the main truck traffic and it was getting,
Yeah.
I mean, it's getting rugged, I mean, it wasn't like it was horrible, but it was a week away from being pretty bad, so.
We've been trying to drivel back and forth as we can here, or.
But I didn't know if you hadn't been down there, I drove it last night, it was, I was pulling a trailer with an excavator, and it was, uh, it was getting there, it was getting there, I mean, it was just, it was getting where it needs some tension, so yeah, as long as you know about it, that's.
The truck drivers called in yesterday and actually said that too, they said it's.
It wasn't, I drove it on Friday, and then we were finishing yesterday, and from Friday even to just Monday afternoon is where, like, Friday, I was like, ah, it's not bad for as much gravel as you can haul, and then Monday, I was like, okay, there it showed up. It was getting pretty dumb.
It's pretty old, pretty. And it was in good shape when I was out there that day when you were waiting.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And I've been out there a couple times, and I thought overall for the summer, it hasn't been bad, I mean, there's some washboards at the intersections, and it's not perfect, but yeah, Monday after, yesterday afternoon is where it started to show up, so.
Lot of weight over there.
So, I was looking at this email from John, Martin.
Yeah.
And he's saying with that grade raise at North of Vatican, there's option one and two, we're supposed to let them know which one they want to go with. Did you tell him, or said something, they're supposed to decide on, or?
I guess I was this morning, I didn't want it to come in.
I was first.
I'll have to look at that, I guess, I don't.
Yes, he's saying just let him know which option you want him to proceed with Seventeenth Avenue, if you want to go with option one or two.
Is that for flex funding, application?
Yeah.
I didn't know that's a decision these guys needed to make, or you can just, Russ can do it.
I'd imagine there's a pretty big price difference between one and two, because generally with the grade raises, there's a minimum grade raise and there's like a final grade raise. The minimum is usually quite a bit cheaper, at least it has been in all the other grade raises.
I'm sure it's the same here.
So I think minimum, I'm guessing if you're gonna do flex blending and all that, they probably have like a two foot or a four foot, or usually it's like two foot is like a minimum and four foot's like a final grade raise.
Four, that's a lot.
It's a big difference, because then you get wider. Well, then you get, you gotta get wider, that's always in trouble, it's not just the height, it's trying to go out with it.
Isn't that great, Brad?
Well, and if you're doing grade raises, it's usually over water, so trying to get wider and taller over water isn't usually not cheap, it's just tough, it's.
So how about the Chazelle project, you know, you know, work it in, yes, this year?
No, um, what we decided there, that actually was part of our discussion that we had out there. And we did go through some ups and downs with that as well, and there's still a few things to kind of hire out, which, what, how we want to do it, and where do we want to go with it and stuff like that, so. What John, or Mike Rovinius had reached out and said that it was probably a better idea just to kind of push it off till next year, is what he recommended, based on waiting for some of this funding, because there was a possibility that we could actually give more money for that same project, is what he recommended, so that's kind of.
Looks like you were talking about changing the box cover too, you know?
That's what, that was one of the parts of the flex funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, because that, otherwise we were gonna have to, you know.
Well, and that's one we kind of looked at already, so we were able to slide into the high category with matching funds, because we already kind of talked about that already, so if we could get some flex funds and change that box cover, which was a huge expense.
Yeah.
Um, it would have. Well, and I can tell you, we probably missed our window at Cantail already, because in the next three weeks, you're gonna have potato harvest. And then on top of that, the rotated crops down there is all corn, and that corn looks like, there's gonna be a lot of bushels coming on that road, like, forget the potato guys. Whoever's growing corn down there too is gonna be running a lot of grain on that road, so you, I don't even know if you're gonna have a window to work on that road in the next two weeks here, the way it's looking, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of action coming in.
That's a small window there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they're hauling suds out at a certain period too, you know, seeds, right?
We are looking at that same road and that same project, I guess, um, the water that drains to the south through that box cover, it doesn't drain anymore, it's all silted in, it's just kind of sitting there still. So I never talked to the potato guys yet, I've been doing some pricing for a long reach excavator, stuff like that, just trying to get things in order. We're looking at possibly going in there, if we can get permission, the water board did okay it for us to go in there and do it, just.
They did okay?
Yes, they did. And then it would be a matter of the potato guys giving us permission to go through their land there. And then go in there and kind of finish that out again, so we can get that water moving, I think would help the ditches and stuff as well there, to get some of that water going.
Big, big help, yeah, big help, yeah.
So.
I know, uh, Jim Wagner talked to me too, and he is gonna talk to the potato guy, the, the big wig at the potato farms, a little bit about some help or some, just with a lot of the stuff out there, he just was gonna see what he could come up with, he said, I think they're willing to probably help out somewhat on, on some of the stuff too, so he said he'd get back to us.
I mean, from what I've seen with the trucks that they have come in and out of there, they've been, when I've been there, there's times I've been blading or down in the pit or something, they've been very good, they, their speed limit is low. I mean, they seem to be driving, doing anything they can to help, I mean, they're not abusing anything that I've seen, it's just, that road is just, uh, it, it's, it's needed repair for a long, long time, you know, so.
And it's a lot of other traffic.
Right.
They, they get the brunt of the blame, and I know I've talked to Jody too, Katerling, and he said, you know, we don't try to run, we, we, we don't run on rain days, you know, we try to let it dry out. There's a lot of campers and other just general traffic that goes across there, you know, we also have all those guys that stay out there that work there, they're driving across some of that too, you know, I mean, it's. Well, like I said, there's gonna be a lot of grain coming out of this road, too, like, not just the potato. The suds take, because the brunt of it, but they're really not laying a problem. Irrigated, right, or just the. There may be half, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of traffic.
There's a lot of activity out there, it's its own little town.
I'll use one word caution when it comes to wanting pavement, and the only reason I say that is I had to go down to Beaver Lake State Park yesterday. You want to be on a road that requires a lot of county input, because it doesn't seem to get the state and federal dollars that, that highway going, till you get to the road that goes to the park, then that must get more state funding, because that's been redone. That piece between Bernstead and Highway three. That piece between Bernstedt and Highway Three.
Yeah.
It's awful, it's, and that's what happens to pavement when it doesn't get overlaid. And that's where like, I know pavement always sounds so great, it's twenty years, thirty years later, when there isn't the funding for these minor paved roads.
Yeah.
That's where you start to run into, that road is terrible, like it needs, and I'm sure it's just difficult to, to fund, you know, I mean, it's a long stretch of pavement.
Yep.
You know, probably county responsible for a big piece of it, and it's not getting the attention, so. It's not the silver bullet all the time too, I mean, I'm not advocating that you don't wanna do pavement, but better be prepared for. Significant costs down the road anyway, and that's where you're starting to see the brunt of it on like a road like that.
You take it like the state road down there on the state, uh County Line Campbell and Evans, on that eight mile road, where they lifted that tar up. And they must have ground it and replaced it and gravelled it, I mean, it's a hell of a good road, now.
Pretty good, it's, it's a little washboard.
Oh yeah, it can get tough.
Well, I know there's a lot of gravel, that's a lot more fun to drive than that chunk of pavement going to the state park, when I drove it yesterday, I can tell you, there's.
Well, and I worked over there, I worked a lot, most gravel's better than that.
That's a bad piece of road, I mean, that really needs attention now, so not all pavement is a good thing with that too, unless you're ready to maintain it, so.
Russ, have you heard anything from Shremenski's?
No, I have not, it actually told me it was gonna have some paperwork for me for this meeting.
Yeah.
And I have not, and I kind of forgot about it as well, but he was on board as far as crushing, it was just a matter of, there was a few different numbers depending on the quantity. That we wanted to do.
Yeah.
Uh we did talk about possibly adding some different material to it to make it a little bit better.
Right, quality, good quality.
You know, it's, it's gonna get, the numbers are gonna get kind of a little bit on the high side, I mean, how high, that's yet to be determined, but. Just see where it goes, I guess, from there, he did plan on being down there in that hate pit down there very soon here, from what he told me last time I talked to him.
Yeah.
But I did not have a, he was gonna actually have some.
Not much left of the Knoll pit.
No, that's going fast.
Is it?
We've been trying to conserve it a little bit and try to jump around, but with the Mastel pit kind of being tied up because of the bridge construction going on there. We haven't taken any out of there yet.
Yeah.
You know, the Wobong pit has a nice pile, but that, that master, the Knoll pit there just went down. We hauled a lot of gravel out of there first couple of months here of the summer, you know.
Is there any reserve left in that pit?
By, by the Knoll liner, I do not know that.
Because, I don't know. There's rocks still laying there, isn't there?
There's rock there, yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's where I would just say, I think you just have to reduce your yardage if it gets to be where it's getting too much. Because a giant pile of gravel we don't wanna use is just no good to us, we're learning that, but cheap gravel, if it's not any good, it's not cheap gravel.
Right, right.
It's actually kind of expensive, so we're better off to, you know, if we were gonna crush a hundred thousand yards and now we can only crush sixty, but it's better gravel, I'll take sixty yard, sixty thousand. Quality gravel that we can use anywhere.
I agree.
So I, I would say I would use that as the consideration.
Three, six copies, is there one for Russ?
Yeah, give him that one instead of Joe here to Russ.
Have, have you talked to.
I'm gonna try something here.
Russ.
Oh, it worked.
Have you talked to Sares about gravel out that way or not?
Who?
Sares.
Craig Sares.
No, I have not made any attempts as far as other gravel and stuff like that, I'm, I'm working into that, I have not gotten that far yet.
Okay.
Trying to, kind of prioritize things a little bit, cause we can't, we're running every piece we got till we. Kind of slow down, then I'll kind of look at some of that stuff if.
You're not going to slow down.
Well, if the weather slows down or something like that, it's kind of.
All these rains have made it tougher, that's for sure. Yep. That would be a good place though to have a fire.
There's a few places.
You know, and make, uh Aaron's right, make quality gravel.
Quality. Exactly, yeah.
We can figure out how much we can afford to do, right?
When, we do have a few good leads and then uh John Martin as well gave us a website when we were in that meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
That kind of piggybacks on the piles we already have now that are, you know, they're possibly, possibly gravel in them same areas that are close by that already is there.
Good.
So there again, just a matter of putting some effort forward and stuff like that, I guess is.
Good, use, use us an option, right?
Right, yeah, you know, cause yeah, we, I mean, we're, we're using gravel, no doubt.
You still got the guys helping?
Yes, yeah, Steve did indicate, uh here with me yesterday, he's gonna be taking off at the end of the month to haul potatoes.
Oh.
He does that yearly thing, so.
Nick also?
Not as of now, cause Steve has reached out, so. We'll be looking, there's a couple of other guys that possibly would come on, local guys, um Tyler over there from Jamestown has indicated he can have some trucks here. If we want him as well, the, and. Need help, no doubt, the really nice thing with, with Steve and Nick, they're, they're local guys.
Yeah.
And there was days when they were all three going in separate directions and that was really nice, not having to have someone out front directing them or leading them to. It's just, I mean, like I said, it, it is a big plus and they, they've been working out where to do it, so.
Good, good.
That's probably not the end of the world if they get rained out that day too, cause it didn't come from an hour and a half away or something.
Exactly, yeah, they've been, like I said, it's been working really good. Hopefully we can figure some out with somebody in the area in here, if not, we'll have to reach out and bring in somebody from the outside, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, how do they else guys?
Keep working at it. Can't correct, won't correct at all, not any year.
Yeah, no, we won't, we won't get uh, get caught up this year, that's for sure, so.
Yeah.
But.
Problems we're making up.
Little by little, it's, I mean, the roads we're choosing as far as gravel and stuff, we're trying to choose the roads that are traveled by more, you know, there's.
Yeah.
Not saying anyone deserves any more or any less, but there's roads sometimes that lead to one or two places. They probably don't hold a priority that plays that covers five or ten areas, you know, so that's how we're jumping around. And then Mother Nature's kind of pushing us around as well, so that's pretty much how we're picking and choosing what to do and which ones to wait on, so.
Well, that's the way to do it, do your main roads, yeah.
Okay, if that's what you guys got for me?
I'm good, anybody else?
Nope.
All good, okay, thanks Russ. Next is the zoning ordinance update. We've got Sheridan done. Maybe Aaron Redtold you that Dunn County landed on the.
Oh, yeah, my, my ample spare time, yeah, actually I.
I did read a lot, but I didn't read, I kinda, you know, there's a lot in there.
There's a lot.
There's, we don't need all that.
Sheridan seems a lot more reasonable with Duns at least than the.
Boy, they're detailed.
Yeah, Dunn's significant.
Oh man, I tell you, they did a lot of work.
Lot of work in time and that, yeah.
Oh, and doesn't maybe fit.
Well, one thing to remember with Dunn, they literally do have a zoning department too though.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, like they, they have a full time employee and maybe even partial staff that preps things for the commissioners and, you know, or. We have, we have Josh and, you know, and, and the little bit we put together and try and make it work, you know, so. And some of these other counties have some significant resources into their, their zoning side.
Is that something we should look into, is starting a zoning ordinance committee?
Well, one time.
Cause worse quarters are starting inundated with stuff, projects here, we already got two now, this morning. There's a lot of counties that do this, we don't have to be a big county.
I mean, there is material in this Dunn County.
Right.
It's unreal. And that was a little la pot county until one of them.
Yeah, right. No.
Ranch country.
Yeah.
How do you, yeah.
I mean, the spare time that I had in the last month, I was looking over that, the uh, the permit, no, but uh.
Oh, yeah, right around that.
I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time on like even Dunn County's deal, because I was looking at that.
I just did a quick files, but I.
And you guys read it from, from page to page?
Not the whole way, no.
Dunn's?
Yeah, not take you on.
You have easier luck reading the Bible, I think. Well, I mean, it's any chance we can get a hold of them, they have this books on tape that we can listen to over Robin. See if you can get it on some podcast, but yeah, it's, I mean, Sheridan is significant.
Sheridan, this, this is pretty recent.
Well, I mean, this is literally half, if not, I mean, Dunn's gotta be what, around a hundred pages, right? It was like eighty-five or a hundred pages. And Sheridan.
I'll bet the wall engineering now.
Eighty-five, eighty-five, Eric.
Yeah, well, Dunn had like eighty-five pages, so I mean, that was.
He's the chairman of Sheridan County, a lot of this effort was his.
Sure.
Okay. Well, this is something we could look at.
Sheridan.
Well, I think it's good to look at all these counties, I think it's, you know, I.
I think you could pick something from any one of these counties.
Well, I tell you, this one, you know, it's gonna hurt to be detailed, but we, you know, some of that stuff you leave out.
Details are always good sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah, yeah.
They're a loophole to jump through.
I read their conditional use permits or requirements, there's a lot in there that we're not even thinking about.
Yes, I agree.
Well, and that's cause they were a lot like us, and so they were inundated. And then obviously everything that comes with it, energy side, the, you know, transportation, everything changes once you get a.
Did wake you up?
Mm-hmm.
You have to uh, application procedures for this.
Well, they got a nice definitions por- portion.
Definition of used in the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is kind of a crucial part too, just because there's some times where you're like, well, what defines a work camp, well, they have a definition for a work camp.
Yeah, right, they cover that all.
Right?
And they even go, we never even thought of this decibel is for what a industry produces.
Well, the only thing with some of those decibel deals is a lot of that is addressed through the PSC and state law too, so I mean, there is some coverage that. Not, not saying we don't need it, but there is some overlap, which is nice, you know, cause some of that stuff. As we know, the state does supersede the county and something, you gotta wear that. But yeah, there, I mean, so there, there are some things that you maybe don't even have the right to regulate, or if you do, you're probably just picking back in on state law or. Things like a desk for rating and stuff, some of that stuff is established or there are like industry standards through the PSC and stuff, so. So it's not all on your shoulders to do everything, like that, like you said, it's good to have that as a part of your county ordinance as well.
Right.
But if they need a state permit, like some of these major projects, that, that stuff does get covered, so. I mean, you probably wouldn't have more restrictive with some of those things, just because you'd have to, to even have the equipment and the qualifications to go up and test it.
Right.
Nothing wrong with having too many things in your book, more things than you need, because uh industries could come.
Well, that sounds like a federal government government here, come on.
No, I'm just saying, there, there, there's nothing to, to having too many um, too much information in your, in your.
Is that all correct, yeah?
Yeah, rather than not enough, because some of these industries may come, and then you've already got it covered, not that we necessarily.
When it comes to industry, that's right, but I, I, I'll defend one thing with Emmons County, at least in my opinion, I felt like it, it was. You know, some people say, well, you don't have a lot of rules, and that, that can probably be looked at as bad in the sense that there are some scenarios like. You look at some of the developments at Beaver Bay and Cat Tail Bay, were probably a little underregulated just as a whole, like some things that probably should have been ironed out. I think the opinion, the opinion of the county has always been more of the less regulation, like people regulate themselves, and it's probably. Turned out very well, it's just that there are portions that probably were underregulated, even the industrial side with some of this stuff. There was just not probably enough regulation, you know, when you weren't seeing the projects, there was no need to regulate, right? Like, now that you're seeing multiple similar projects of the same scale and side, now it's, it's time to address some of those things and. Probably even the same when it comes to some of these developments, which I think we have improved, like even just incorporating Josh in the permit process. The, the plat approvals, you know, we, we, we've ironed out several plats where we've told people that we're not gonna maintain the roads inside of it. Where before that was always a gray area, you know, and so I think there's been improvements made, it's not like nothing's been done, but you know. I don't, I don't wanna make it sound like we just need to double our ordinances on everything, you know, cause that, that could be scary.
Commercial industrial, right?
Completely agree with that, because we're getting, we're getting issues now that, right, they are, like they need to be addressed and. And even, and everything seems to be lately pertaining to um AI and, and, and the energy consistent with that. Cause I'd even argue that this battery storage for the wind towers in some way, shape or form is like grid assistance for this extra draw, you know, so. You're having a lot of scenarios with that where, like why all of a sudden you wanna have storage here, so well, it's because it's all about strengthening this portion of the grid. Because there's major, major draws on it in this area, so that's.
Whereas projects coming, we don't even see coming.
Well, of course, the, by the time we hear about the project, it's literally shovel ready, so we're behind the eight ball, which, you know, that's, that's where some of this zoning stuff. Is really probably getting to be.
Necessary.
Far more, far more important than Emmons County's probably given it, just because you're not used to it.
Yeah.
At least companies need a sleepy eye.
Well, it's not so much I think a sleepy eye, I think it's just so much it's just on the cutting edge of stuff, like every time, like I've been commissioner for going on seven years. It seems like every project that we get is like the first of its kind, you know, the carbon pipeline is the biggest, longest one that's ever been, there's. You know, the, the solar idea was one of the biggest ones North Dakota's ever seen, and now we're looking at the first ever battery storage. Like it seems like it's always on the cutting edge and it's always around here, and it, because. I think it's maybe a lax regulatory environment, I don't mean that in a bad way, I think the idea's always been you wanna welcome projects, it's just. Do you wanna welcome every project, that's what we have to decide, a lot of it also comes from the state side, as we've seen. There's been deregulation, because they wanna attract these projects and these industries, so they are targeting North Dakota, not just because we have. Low population rural counties, but because we have a state government that seems to wanna, whether you like that or not, that's the truth, they're just, it's a pro. It's a pro-energy, pro-project type state with that type of atmosphere, so it's attracting these projects, they're all over though. There's gonna be, I just read this morning, there was another one that's uh, a wind farm that's gonna be going in central North Dakota, it said, I didn't click on the article, but. Somewhere up in that area, there's another, I mean, there's, there's these wind projects are coming everywhere. And then there's obviously the grid association with that, the upgrade to the transmission and all of it, I mean, it's, it's everywhere.
I see it just the leasehold in Emmons County itself.
Yeah.
Just the leasehold and what they used on this first phase, they've got enough leasehold that's way in there for another two phases to develop.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, and I know, I know when they did our project, I think they were gonna be leasing somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand acres, and they thought they needed like somewhere in the neighborhood of like fifteen to twenty.
Yeah.
So when they go out and get leases, they're trying to acquire leases for future expansions, so they don't have to redo the process again, that's pretty common to. Probably get more than you need and then stay it down, but, but again, there's, you know, every, every county in North Dakota probably is seeing. This influx of just wind, solar, pipelines, all of it, and it's not all necessarily bad, but.
Are they all?
It's not going away, this isn't a once in a lifetime project anymore, like it was twenty some years ago, when like the natural gas came through Emmons. Wow, you're probably never gonna see this again, well, now we're seeing it every eighteen months, you know, we're seeing.
This wind is at a Q forty-five tax yield too.
I would assume, but I truly don't know, but yeah, I mean, I think almost all these projects are associated with some major government subsidy as well. And not just the renewables, it's the oil, it's the gas, it's, every one of them has some sort of state or federal level assistance. And that's why you're also seeing a big push, especially in North Dakota, there's multiple funds that go to research, development. Project assistance and all with, you know, pipelines, there's the council, the renewable uh council, I think the state legislature puts twenty-five million into that. And it's just renewable stuff and, so there's, that's why you're seeing a major influx too, because there's, there's money available, there's a regulatory environment that they. See as favorable and, and they're coming, so.
And I feel this battery deal, they got what, twelve acres they wanna utilize, right?
Twenty.
They got how many acres they leased twenty, twenty-two or something like that. Twenty-four, I just, that's my opinion, and only my opinion, I think they wanna get this battery facility placed and proved, and they're gonna. I just, that's my opinion, and only my opinion, I think they wanna get this battery facility placed and approved, and they're gonna build it for two months. That's my opinion.
I think the natural progression is always to build for the future with all these projects, so I think you're seeing, yeah, you're gonna see, you know, maybe a larger footprint than necessary for, like you said, phase one. And so, yeah, we're, we're kind of at the cutting edge on all of it, not just Emmons, every county is seeing, I mean, every, every county in the state at some point is seeing some sort of, you know, project, call it what you will, whether it's energy or mostly energy.
Yep. It's tough for the world guys to see that.
I, you know, I actually like what Commissioner Miller said before, I think it's probably time for Emmons to start looking at maybe having a zoning board. You know, and there's a process to create one, and we're always kind of skirted by with a lot of other counties in similar fashion, but it's getting to be too much of a responsibility on even the commissioners to just try and oversee all this and know it all. You know, at least, you know, we have a water board, a wheat board, all these other boards, I mean.
It's kinda like what they did earlier, three of them that stepped great, it's good that they put together the numbers, you know?
Right, it's just, it's, you know, there's just too much that needs to get handled by so few when it comes to it, so there's just a scenario where.
The other county had a zoning board at one time.
Weeder?
Yes, because I served up.
Well, there was the board, there was like the group that did the comprehensive plan and, and the actual zoning outlet, that, that was amongst us. I mean, it's, it's, it's probably time, just because we're just getting inundated with these projects, there needs to be a lot more, you know, and we have other responsibilities once we leave here, just even just looking at the roads, doing the other things, and then to, to try and, you know, direct time specifically to even draft in this ordinance book and stuff, it's just, it's just a lot. I'm not saying it's too much, but it's a lot, it's just, and to get it right and make sure it gets its due diligence is, it's tough, so.
If we don't start, start it, we're gonna have to do it twice a month.
Well, it's getting to that point, like you said, because there's just, you know, even like this morning now with this other part that's coming in, you know? This is another project that, like you said, it's shovel ready and it shows up at the meeting and now.
Yeah, and they want approval today.
Like even this, it's like this almost.
They want it today.
This looks like it should be a part of the conditional use permit, you know? So, there should probably be another layer of filtering before it gets to us, so that way, you know, we're not receiving it once a month and then.
It's like ordinance.
Yeah, well, I mean, most big counties do eventually have it, because it's just too much, like you said, you're either meeting multiple times a month, or you form another committee, well, either way, it's, I mean, efficiency wise, it's about the same, I mean, it's the same amount of time, so.
I gotta see this one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't remember, but that's.
How long's that been, Joe?
Nineteen eighty-two is when the comprehensive plan was formed, I don't know.
Was there a committee then or?
Well, there was a committee.
Well, I know, uh, Stephen Bush was, uh, on that.
That was Matt, I remember that.
He was terrible.
Twenty years or what, I mean, I mean, what was it?
Yeah, he was, uh, called there. He was a coordinator.
Okay.
I don't remember how big he grew, but, uh, yeah. I remember we had some real controversial things, I said it was a Hannibal, uh, beating.
Okay.
I don't know, nineteen eighty-two is when the comprehensive plan was drafted and these ordinance were adopted in accordance to that nineteen eighty-two comprehensive plan. But it doesn't have a date on this one specifically.
This would have been after that.
Yeah.
Who else is on with you?
You know, I don't remember.
Okay. Is there five members or three?
I, I don't remember any of that kind of, it seems like there could have been five, but I don't know, I'm not sure. It's gotta be somewhere, I suppose, with some records.
If we're to form a committee, I read in Dunn Counties that the commission appoints people to this committee. But we take people that are interested in serving on it, give a list, put them out in the paper if you're interested in this committee.
Well, I think if you're gonna have any authority, I think you gotta form it like the wheat board, like you have to have appointed officials that serve on an actual board. Not just like a committee, but, because with committees, I think you probably have limitations on how long they can serve, or if they, like, I mean, with committees, it's probably very short term, like, less than a year or something, but with a board, you would have your,
Right.
Just like any other board, and then the commissioners will appoint, and, you know, and you go from there, and they'd have their own small mill levy, there, no, there's limits on the mill levy, there's a whole, I mean, it's pretty defined in the century code on establishing a board like that, so.
How many guys are on that Dunn County board, you have any idea? Five?
Uh, well, I don't know, it didn't say in there, I see.
I would say five.
Generally, it's. Generally, in the century code, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of five with a max of like thirteen or something, you can kind of be anywhere, but. Like, there's a lot of, I think, early, I wanna say there was seven on that board. It's generally an odd number, usually they put like five, seven, depending on how many people you represent. And Emmons, a five to seven person board is probably more than enough.
Yeah.
You know, and that would depend if you wanna incorporate commissioners in it, that's, I think, like with Burley, I think two commissioners serve on it, so then they have like seven, because there's five board members and then they have two commissioners. I think, I'd have to double check, but I, I know there's commissioners that serve on the zoning board, that's kind of part of your, like, your portfolio with that is to serve on boards.
We should look at that.
We should, right? Yeah, I think we should.
Well, I think it's definitely time for at least discussion, discuss it, because it seems like these, these projects are getting a lot more common.
This is overwhelming.
They need a lot, well, they just need a lot more scrutiny, more than probably just the board commissioners can do while also doing all the other budgets and other stuff too. We're probably not giving it its due diligence.
If you have somebody specialized in something, then they can concentrate on that.
Well, I mean, technically we already have an employee of it in a sense with Josh, I mean, how far you wanna expand it is one thing, but it's not that far off to what we're doing already in a way, so.
Would it be a good board?
We got some good candidates that they sitting probably already.
Well, I know, I think on a zoning board, I think you're gonna have some interest, that's a lot more.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, as far as, you know, participation and things that are really happening, sometimes a, a wheat board or a water board can get kind of stale, you know, where, you know, a zoning board's gonna be, from what I can see, pretty busy. I mean, because even, even the bottom items in the miscellaneous, the majority of those would be zoning board issues, just the flats and the, you know, so. Well, I'm just saying that, you know, there's a lot of those things that probably just need a little more due diligence. I know I get a lot more zoning calls than I used to, people calling for distances off roads, stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I have a pretty fair knowledge, but I generally direct them to Josh if I don't know, you know, I might, I might give him my information and then say, you should check, check with Josh, but pretty sure it's this, you know, and that's.
He's pretty much our zoning board now.
Well, and he's very knowledgeable, he's good at it, he's got tools at his fingertips to be able to get to it, I mean, so it does work out.
So, if you had two commissioners, him and three other from the county, would make up a zoning board?
I don't know if you could, you would have to have him as an employee more than an appointed member, probably. So, you'd have to have a board and then have like Josh or someone, you'd kind of like, oh, like Ardella was with the water board, Kayla the wheat board.
Oh, sure.
I'm going to need to their website, Dunn County, they got nine on there.
Nine on their board?
Nine on there, really?
Well, I think it just depends on how much representation, you know?
Big county.
Yeah, a lot to do.
Well, and they have a lot of stuff, like, I mean, so depending on, well, the other question would be is like, how many townships does Dunn have? Are they trying to get representation as, it don't work.
Right.
With Emmons not having a lot of townships, basically, the, the county districts is probably almost enough representation, so I would, I would say five people and an employee would be a, probably the size board Emmons would need.
Yeah.
You know, but there's a lot of century code on it, a lot of that's already established, you don't have to, you know, the main thing is just following the steps. Whatever it would take to create that board and, you know, so.
Okay, you wanna move on? All good? Okay, David Ma, conditional use permit discussion.
I've got a copy of the minutes from August of twenty twenty-three for you guys.
Yeah, boy, I should have read over that.
Scary, if you never read.
Yeah.
So, if you guys could just read those minutes, I want, if anyone takes a minute or slowly outlined it for you.
Okay.
So, you get a little bit up to speed what's going on. And I was at this meeting. Did you get a copy, Joe? Okay, is there a, or a? Okay, um, I just gotta get a little brief history here, well, first, I'm David Ma from Hazleton, who doesn't, who doesn't know me. And, um, I served on the senics board when we built it at Hazleton years ago, so I know the importance of minutes. And we got audited every year, so my figures had to match, you know, but we got things accomplished that were in the minutes, and I never got called out once that I made a mistake, so I'm proud of that. But during that time, we were building senics, we had a slight problem with Hazleton, the city of Hazleton, I won't go into what it was, but I demand, I went to a city meeting and I demanded their minutes, because I knew what they had said. And they backed out right away, because minutes are almost like a law, it's very important, you know, so I know that from experience. Okay, so, I guess the best way I can do this is just read what I wrote down, and you guys could ask me questions, but first, I wanna say that this has nothing to do with next era and the battery plant. They just haven't been the first big project that's coming due here since we passed this three percent. And that was during CO2 pipeline, the beginning of the arguments. And, um, at that time, it was passed, you know, and with the CO2 in mind, but it was also for future projects coming to our county. So, Commissioner Weidel was looking forward, knowing that there are probably more projects coming. And that would mean that, you know, we can get some money from these big companies, because these big companies are coming here for a reason. We don't have a lot of zoning rules, they want their land, and they make billions of dollars out of these projects. And we're sitting at a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. And these companies have gotta be laughing at that. So, this three percent was passed, so now, I, I wrote this down, and I'm not sure what the battery farm is gonna be, but roughly a hundred and sixty-seven million, I heard. So, three percent of that comes to five million dollars.
How much?
Five million, five million, ten thousand, I Googled it. So, now, we all think, the way we grew up, that's a lot of money. But you gotta put yourself in, in their world, that's just pocket change to these people. And back when this was passed, there was no Q forty-five tax cuts. So, these, these companies are gonna come here to make money off this, and yes, they might bring some jobs, that's all good, but they'll still pay you these fees. Uh, we gotta get up to speed on this, and I don't care if other counties don't have one, but we're supposed to be looking forward here, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of that over the years, getting ahead of the game. Like Aaron said, they keep coming with these projects, well, and that's fine if they fill their county if we approve them, but we can't be settling for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, because the next thing, then we're short of money for graveling the roads, we gotta raise property taxes. You know, it just goes down the line, so we're hurting ourselves, and I'm not being greedy, this was passed for a reason. And, um, the reason I'm here is it never got finished. So, back to the importance of the minutes, somebody didn't follow through on this. And I understand we're supposed to have a public meeting, is that true, Aaron, or to finish this, you know, to get it in the zoning, or how does this work?
Right, well, I, I mean, from what I remember, we, we even amended this, because this conversation was had, the, the application of the fee was gonna be three percent of the total project, even outside of Emmons County.
Yes, that's true.
And so, that conversation was, I didn't even think we had that authority. So, then later on, we did amend it to three percent of the total project in Emmons County.
Okay, that's fine, but that didn't even get done.
Well, and that's, because the other issue we ran into, which is again, kind of piggybacks on the conversation we just had, Emmons County has two conditional use permits, and I don't think a lot of people realize that. Because there's the conditional use permit, then there's the industrial conditional use permit.
Right.
And the intention was, was that the conditional use permit was supposed to be for little stuff, like, like anything that needed a conditional use permit, like for our citizens, we're not gonna go and have them, like, have paid this three percent, you know, it was gonna be just a modest fee. The industrial conditional use permit was supposed to be with the intention of like your wind generation facilities, pipelines, all that.
Yeah.
But what's happened is, it's getting, how's the right word, it's getting interpreted as if you're not putting it on industrially zoned land, then you don't have to get an industrial use permit. And that's the difficulty that we have as a county, is we haven't actually specified what an industrial, we have an interpretation of it.
Okay.
But that's not finished either, so, I mean, you're not wrong.
This didn't get finished, and what you just said didn't get finished, so we can't issue any permits, this is on the books. I can't see where we can issue any permits anywhere until this is settled. You can't do the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars if this is on the books. I mean, these minutes are almost, I mean, Joe's the lawyer here, but I think this is a legal matter. Because you're, by not getting this accomplished, you could cost our county millions of dollars just with the current projects that are on the table. And I think this is crazy that we're letting this go. And some of the companies might pack up and leave, that's fine, but some are gonna come here. So, I, I don't know, this has to be settled, in my opinion. You can't just brush it aside, like it never happened, it, it says right here for the industrial projects, and I understand, Aaron, and we haven't established if it goes across the border of my land, is that industrial or farmland? But how do you fix that? I don't know, somebody's gotta know.
Well, we're trying to fix that, though, with going through the zoning update.
Okay, well, so then we can't issue no permits, I don't think, until this is done. Prove me wrong, I don't know.
As we know, once you get industrial law in ag land, it's not ag land anymore, it's converted over.
To industrial.
Yes.
Well, you would think so. And, uh, Kevin Bernard, now if you'd let him speak just a little bit, he was at that meeting, and originally, if anyone, he said, well, I'll let him explain if he could.
Go ahead, Kevin, go ahead.
I was at, I was at that meeting and I.
I see your minutes where your name's in here.
I remember it quite well, and, um, it was proposed, I was shocked that it was only two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permitting fee, and it was talked about going to four-fifty, and then Leonard was discussing a percentage, and I pushed to get it to five percent. I wanted five percent, and I know there was some discussion, and I remember Aaron, Aaron having some points about if it's too high, nobody will come here. And I said, well, they're coming in here with billions of dollars, five percent, if they can't afford that, we have no right, they shouldn't be here anyway. And look at, like David said, look at the dollars that we're missing out, our staff in the Coward House has, for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, has to do all this work. We as taxpayers in this company need to be better taken care of as far as when it comes to these companies coming in, they need to step up and pay a little more so our employees don't have to do all the hard work. And what's three, five percent of a big project, I think the county members deserve that. So, and I don't know where this went or where it's gonna have to go from here, but like Dave said, if we keep pushing these projects out for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, it's just not right, we, we need to do something, we're, we're in a different era, you just discussed the zoning board and everything else, and I agree with you guys. We have to start waking up and changing things, and it has to start now.
And that's why Leonard was looking forward on this stuff, and whoever else agreed with it, and there was a few other citizens there. But I got a quick example here now, just about the money. So, in our pipeline, pipe of South Dakota here, man, we got to meet a lot of people. So, down by Leola, South Dakota, some people we know, I mean, this is a fact, uh, this lady's brother-in-law and sister sold twenty acres for three million dollars to put AI center down, and that just happened this spring.
Yep.
Well, now, the county commissioners down there are fighting putting the AI center in the county, and they're probably gonna beat it, so. So, that company's just probably gonna walk away from three million dollars, but that's part of the business, you know? So, they're willing to pay three million for just twenty acres of land, I mean, everybody has to wake up here and, I think, and get with us, because, Because, you know, and I don't care if Logan County doesn't have a permit, that's their problem. Just think that we would've had this 3% in before the wind farms came to this county or the Dapple Pipeline. And some of this, the PSC might be able to override, but not all of it. So I just think, as Kevin said, we're missing out here. But my point is, it's already on the books and we have to complete this, one way or another. And, you know, is that legal? Or, I mean, do we have to get, you know...
Joe?
The state of North Dakota involved on this? I'm telling you, I'm not gonna quit on this one. Cause it was passed.
What are your thoughts, Joe?
Well, we have a zoning ordinance. You can pull it up on our website. And it does have permitting process on there that's been passed and it hasn't been over... I guess that hasn't been amended officially, to my knowledge. And I just read this now. I kind of vaguely remember this a little bit.
You were sitting right by Leonard, I remember very clearly.
There is, like I said, there's a, there's, like, for instance, the policy we're talking, or the project that we're talking about, that I believe that's in a district that's agricultural, according to our, that's how it's been zoned. So there are permitted uses for agricultural districts, and then there are conditional uses. And so they're filing a conditional use permit under ours, existing zoning ordinances. So whether or not we wanna amend those, update them, tighten them up, change our, you know, I agree with $250. And I think they're paying a lot more than that anyway, but that's, obviously, that's pretty low.
But I think if the citizens in Emmens County would under, nobody knows about this, but handle this. And you guys are all new commissioners. But if the people in Emmens County find out that we're giving up this kinda money for these projects, they're gonna be mad. Because like I say, you either raise our taxes, or Russ says we don't have enough gravel, whatever, it goes right down the line. And I don't think we're being greedy about this at all, and that's why it was passed back then. So I'm just wondering why it's been overlooked for three years. I mean, this is three years ago, and nothing's been done with it. Somebody, you know, somebody didn't do it. I don't know what's going on.
That's what bothered me about this last permit application, saying it's gonna be on ag land. Well, as soon as you build on it, I say that, it'll be converted to industrial.
It's not gonna grow any better.
No, never again.
It's an insult, in my opinion, to the people in Emmens County, a $250 fee.
Well, and if people come in and say, well, we'll give you, say a company comes in and says, well, we'll give you $100 instead of the $250. That's still not right.
Still not right. They know, they know it's still low.
We need to put something, we need to do something for the members of the county.
Well, we have it already, Kevin, right here.
Right, but we need to change it. We need to update it.
And if it takes you guys three months or four months to get the zoning book done with the Senate and have a public meeting, so be it. They're gonna have to wait.
Yeah, yeah. We got a package of material right here that we just saw today this morning with some other project. We didn't know nothing about it.
So I guess that's why I'm here today, and I guess I would ask you guys to finish this, however we have to do it. Because hopefully, there's a bunch of people in Emmens County listening to this right now. If they wanna call me, I'll give them my number. I'll leave it with Marcy. And, or they can get a copy of this from her, but I think it's gonna be interesting when people find out about this. Cause as I said, there's only, well, Aaron's the only one here to know about it, and Marcy and Joe. And there was probably six of us on the pipeline fight that know about it. So I guess that's all I've got, you know? You know, that's, if you look forward 10, 20 years, this could mean a lot of money for your kids and grandkids and, you know? I think it's a really serious issue here that we gotta deal with. So I'll leave it up to you guys and we'll see where it goes. But if it doesn't get done, I'll be back. So I'm telling, I'm just there, cause I took minutes all them years, I know how important this is. And the money, I'm a citizen of this county. I get property taxes increases and this might slow that down. So that's all I got, so thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Joe, what would it take to get this going?
Well, I'm not sure if there's even, if there's a maximum that we can charge. Cause I was looking around at some other conditional use permits for other counties. And 250s actually seems like it's kinda the higher side or about normal.
Higher side, you said?
Yeah, I'm just gonna phone here, $75.
Sorry to be on that note, this is our county.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know if there's a maximum. Cause you get to a point where I don't know if it's outlawed or not, or if you can pass that. But if we're going to make an amendment to the zoning ordinance, that would require two readings for an amended ordinance. We'd have to pass the ordinance. And then once somebody changes the use on the property, it doesn't change how it's zoned. We'd have to, you'd have to have a separate zoning hearing to change a parcel of property. That's just a different use, and that might create a different tax for them, cause you get taxed on your use, not on how you're zoned necessarily, so... But yeah, we would have to amend the ordinance.
We didn't have to have a zoning book updated to do this. We could just, we could pass a zoning ordinance.
You could, yeah.
And then it would be done.
Right, but again, I, this is where I think there's some confusion. The industrial conditional use permit was amended according to those minutes.
Right.
It was amended?
Yes. The argument is that, from what it seems, Next Era has applied as a conditional use permit, not an industrial conditional use permit. Which I'm assuming their reasoning for it is because in Article 2 on page 6 of our zoning book, under a ag district, where this land that they're putting this project is zoned as agricultural, under conditionally permitted uses, electrical transmission facilities and water, gas, oil, coal, slurry transmission pipelines. Those are conditional use permits in agriculturally zoned lands. It's not zoned industrial. That's their interpretation. That doesn't mean we have to approve a permit that way.
But that's how they apply it.
Well, and that's because they're reading this book. That's what I'm saying, like, the idea that this wasn't followed through...
That's how they save money.
Cause it's not totally correct. Again, it's our responsibility as a county to be clear on definitions and things like that, but, I mean...
Then you need to raise the conditional use permit to a percentage, or switch it to...
Right, well, really, the thing is, is the county should have one conditional use permit for everything. The trouble is, is the reason, I think, for this was that there are things that even citizens have to get conditional use permits on for their own land if they're gonna do something that's not permitted on, let's say, ag land. You wanna do something that's not a permitted use, but it's a conditionally permitted use. We don't wanna make Kevin Bernhardt pay 3% or whatever. It was a $250 fee and he went through this process to, you know, maybe add a couple trailer houses for some workers or something. It was always intended to try and help the citizens, but now we're starting to overrule that. Because we're not getting one project every 10 years, we're getting them every 10 months, so...
So you say we need to keep two of them anyway?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's the intention of why it was probably created. There was supposed to be, but even as a county, whenever that was created, before any of our times, that probably wasn't defined properly, or if it is, we haven't truly found it. Whereas what makes it an industrial conditional use permit? Is that just an interpretation? Is that a definition in the book? If it was, who passed it? Like, that's where getting back to like Sheridan County and their definitions. And they're, they're going through the same issues that we did. And that's why us updating our zoning book is so important and probably why we need to consider having a zoning board. Because even the zoning of the county should probably be getting reevaluated. It's only getting evaluated as it gets addressed, instead of looking forward and being like, this area is really turning into a residential area. It's no longer ag. Like, you need to start, you know? I mean, that's the transition. Emmens County's not a little county anymore. We only have 3,300 people, but we got a lot of stuff going on.
And these companies got a staff of attorneys that read this.
Right, so I mean, that's...
If this is what we're gonna apply for, we'll get by on the 250. They haven't recognized it as an industrial for the 3%, so, I mean, they laugh about it.
Well, and like Aaron mentioned, it might, say, if, say, if Aaron had mentioned, say, if the conditional use permit, if I wanna put up a $250,000 building or something, and I need to pay 3%, that's $7, $7,500. Big deal. If that keeps my taxes lower from always going up, and that money goes into the county where they can use that, I don't have a problem with that.
Do you think the general public would be okay with that?
For sure. If you can't, it's like building a house in town. If you wanna put up a million dollar house and you need a five-year tax abate or something, or... You shouldn't be putting up the house. Cause if you can't afford the taxes or the permit, that's something you need to look at. I'm not saying it's gotta be 3%, but something has to change. Because our taxes keep going up, keep going up. These companies keep coming. And it's just something, something needs to be done. And you're never gonna make everybody happy. Some people are gonna sit out there and be mad as heck for saying this. But there's nothing wrong with raising, you gotta go with the $250.
Well, and I think the intention of the county was always to keep permits low so you, you know, you don't inherit a building. But it's going beyond that now. It's not like, okay, someone wants to build a, build a building in town here, you don't wanna get, you know, oh, it's a $100 permit. Cause you want someone to build a building, right? So you try not to be a roadblock to it. But now it's getting to the point, like you said, even a modest building is $100,000 and you can't pay $250 for a building.
Well, I mean, back 10, 15 years ago, this $250 was the main issue, cause a lot of people, there wasn't a lot of projects coming into the area. It was a different time, so it would've been not right to do it back then. But now, the air we're in, you gotta keep looking forward to the future.
But our main concern is still these big companies coming into our state. I mean, all the other counties should get on board with this too, cause they'll still come like at Ellendale. They would've came anyway, you know, they want the jobs would've came with and...
They always use this job deal that they're gonna bring into the money they're gonna generate to, yeah. There's no guarantee in that.
As long as it's separated between industrial and conditional use, they're always gonna use the conditional use.
Oh, yeah.
So you've got, there's gotta be a way, we gotta figure, and I'm not smart enough to do that, but there's gotta be a way to...
Define it.
You gotta define it. Yeah, it needs, well, it needs more definition. That's what we're trying to do right now. Cause we've recognized that this blue book isn't good enough anymore.
It's history.
It's what it, basically, the Summit Carbon Pipeline is what changed all of it. That was like the straw. It's like, okay, this is getting beyond us. Cause it wasn't that long ago, what, that Wind Tower, I mean, Emmens Logan Wind got built, what, seven years ago? 2018, 2019? I mean, that was, I mean, that was a pretty rare thing even at that time. It wasn't only in like the last like five years where it's like, we're getting projects like this every, every year, you know?
CO2 Pipeline came because they brought this all along.
Exactly. And that's why, so, I mean, just, I don't, I don't think it's fair to say nobody's followed through with it. I don't think it's happened very fast, and I don't think we have any experts that can handle it. But we've continued this process of looking into Dunn, looking into Sheridan, because I think this board as a whole has realized that. We're kind of inadequate to this point. We're not, we don't have the expertise. We're not spending the time to become the experts that these things deserve. It's a recognition that we're probably not doing the job we need to do. I think that's a fair statement. I mean, I don't think it's offensive to anybody.
Somebody should've reminded you if you just forgot that this had to be finished, you know?
Yeah, but David was finished, that's what I'm just saying. It was finished, but only in the form of like... My opinion is that project out there is an industrial project.
Yes.
The way it's defined, there's a gray area. That's what they're doing, is they're exploiting the gray area. Now, as commissioners, are we, are we gonna accept that or not? I think there's a fine line of understanding that our gray area, you know, there's probably some leeway on both sides. Do you wanna grant a project cause there's gray area, or do you wanna deny it cause there's gray area? That's for the board to decide. And, I mean, there's a couple...
These projects aren't stopping. I don't know if you guys are aware of it. They're building a big, they're putting big fiber across the whole United States, and it's coming through North Dakota. And there's a, there's a good chance some of it's coming through Emmens County. Cause these data centers need more fiber, and it's huge. And it's, it's going. There's a lot of states that's...
For the AI?
Yes.
And the data centers?
Yes, and it's coming through North Dakota. And I do believe some of it's gonna be in, going through Emmens County.
Well, some of it is. Isn't that, isn't that what's going along the Moffett Road and all that, some of that in 1804?
It's not a bad deal.
I don't think that's it yet. I don't think it started in North Dakota, but it's coming.
It's a pretty big fiber getting plowed through.
They're pulling three, three plastic lines.
That could be the one, but it's a huge fiber, because what's in the ground now cannot...
Accommodate?
No, not at all.
That's what I was told the other day by a guy. I said, what is this? Is this enough? They don't bet. They said, no. They don't know who it is or why it is, but they're not...
Those aren't huge lines though. They're just typical, yeah, they're like three, two-inch lines.
These lines are huge.
Yeah, it's a typical fiber.
I don't believe it's, it's here yet, but it's, they're in Montana doing it, and it's crossing the whole United States.
It's coming.
It's, it's coming. It's, it's a...
Well, and I can tell you too, though, that there's a lot of loopholes coming too, even if you get specific with your zoning. Cause like that project itself, they're running inside the highway right of way, which already eliminates a lot of zoning that... Because there's already easements granted in those highway right of ways through state. That state century code has already codified that. That's why there's a lot of this stuff we don't need to get permits for, so...
Well, I realize you guys are all busy, but this just shows the urgency of why this has to be completed, this zoning deal. It's got a priority. Cause you said you just got one dropped on your desk this morning. Well, what's next month?
Because they're gonna do the same way, guys, what they did with that pipeline, that oil pipeline out here. That 100-foot easement, they're gonna, somebody else is gonna come in on that easement. Cause they already got the easements in place. And they're gonna work with that company just adjacent to it, and they're gonna lay another one. That's coming. The power line industry where they got those easements, the big robot towers, they're gonna utilize those easements. That's where they're gonna knife this stuff and everything through it.
They still need a permit.
I know they do, yeah.
But I think, I think it's a fair statement to say that we're the board that's probably first seeing this.
Yes.
Like, I mean, even like when my Dallas commissioner, like, Dapple going through was a huge deal. And they didn't have anything before or after it really that was anything close to it. And then it was a couple years, and then you might see another project like that. And now, I mean, I've been, this is my second term, and this is probably my third or fourth project where you're just like, wow, this is...
I appreciate you guys coming.
Right.
The timing's pretty good.
I think we, we might be a little bit slower than some people like to see, but I think we've addressed the steps and at least recognize that this board is probably inadequate to handle this type of consistent surge. It's not gonna handle. So we, like, now that we've recognized that, now it's time to address it somehow. And I think that's, I think we've done that. You know, at least to a point, we've at least recognized the problem. That's step one, right?
Right.
Problem is, is we're not handling it, and it's getting even heavier than we can really handle. So we need to address it in some way, shape, or form. Updating the ordinance book is a big part. And then I, it's probably, I mean, this is, if anything, solidification, that we probably need to consider having another board there.
So we're gonna have a meeting tonight, the Next Era.
Well, that's why I say, if I wouldn't have brought this up, would we, if we, if you guys approved that project, would we have just charged it $250? That would've been illegal in my mind because it's on the books. It's supposed to be 3%. Again, Joe's the lawyer, so...
Joe, is it?
No, because to amend your ordinance requires two readings of the ordinance, to amend the ordinance, and then it would have to be approved at the second meeting. And so we didn't do that. So as far as I'm concerned, the ordinance is still standing. There's a fee schedule in the ordinance book too. I don't know if that's been amended or not, but it looks like that says that conditional uses are $50.
Well, that's under, I think that's a different...
Well, we've been through this with the solar farm.
Cause there's still ratings.
Yeah, 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 they're like the ratings are right there. I hate to say that.
Right, and to be clear, Next Era submitted a check for far more than $250, I believe, actually, I think.
I think they doubled it for every container.
I think they did, yeah, they did like 250 or 500 for each.
They know it's cheap.
$64, right? Still dropping a half.
It's pathetic.
It's pathetic. It's an insult.
They should've paid 5 million. Now they're gonna give you 250,000. We're supposed to all be clapping our hands in the table.
Did they give us a check already?
No. Well, they, they submitted a check with the permit.
Battery people? Yeah.
Yeah, Next Era submitted a check with the permit.
You didn't cash it yet, did you? Well, don't, because, again, back in the...
I don't cash.
No.
Well, it doesn't get cashed till the permit gets approved. Come on, you got, like, this is getting a little like...
Well, I realize that.
I know, but everybody's acting like we don't do anything, or we don't know anything. Like, the permit has to get accepted with a check, just like when you build a damn garden shed.
But you can't accept that check at that price.
Exactly. It gets held until the permit gets approved, which it hasn't been approved, so...
It can't be approved with $250 when you got 3%, that's all they'll say.
I think we should have a meeting in about three weeks. Get a public notice for, you need two public notices, right?
Well, the...
Well, you need a first reading and something like that, I don't know. Question for Joe?
What?
For zoning?
To get this straightened out, to finish this off.
If you wanna pass an ordinance to amend your structure yet, or your zoning ordinance that you have currently, then, yeah, you need to have first reading, a second reading.
Get on it.
And there's application requirement and a public hearing and all that good stuff.
All right. If there's one thing we're good at, it's talking about stuff and not doing it.
Yeah, you're right, Craig. You don't make a decision, it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, if anybody's...
What do you guys wanna do?
Make a motion to have a meeting in three weeks and get this straightened out and get the ball started on this.
Craig makes a motion to that?
Are you guys gonna have the ordinance ready at that?
Yeah, we gotta get the ordinance ready, and then you gotta publish it in the paper. And you're having... And you're having a hearing, it, three weeks might not be the right number now.
Well, I mean, or maybe there just needs to be some, a couple of guys to get together to draft the ordinance, cause, I mean, if you're asking me to draft, I'm not really sure what you're asking me to draft. But. You know. I guess we just put it together and have a first reading with whatever we come up with, but you know.
Well, you think you're right, Joe, you wanna write.
Well.
We wanna done right, so there's no loophole that can step through.
Yeah, I wanna draft it the way you guys wanna do it. I'm not really sure what that is. Is that what we were talking about in twenty twenty-two and we piece together some of these meeting minutes to try to put together, or does this board have its own vision? I mean, I don't know. Just need a little more direction, I guess, is all.
You wanna finish off with Commissioner Wykel? Was approved on? It was a three to two vote?
That did get finished. I don't know why everybody keeps saying it didn't get finished. If you go on the internet and you look up the permit, it says three percent of total project and a hundred percent of voluntary easements. And on top of that, the motion that Commissioner Wykel made, which I voted against, was because it literally called for a fee for the total cost of the project even outside of Emmens County, which we don't even have jurisdictional authority to let you fee on, so.
So that needs amended then.
It did get amended. It got fixed. It's three percent of the total cost of the project in Emmens County. It got fixed during the public hearing that you attended and me down in the basement when we had summit here for an hour. That was a part of, that was a part of the amendment.
The problem is the gray areas.
Yes, the problem is, is these things aren't properly defined because we don't have a thorough enough book. You can make amendments like this all day long. If you don't define this stuff down to a T so that a giant corporate lawyer can't figure out a loophole, then a lot of this is a waste of time.
Okay.
So, that's why I'm getting frustrated because we are already moving down this path. I think we need other people involved, probably a zoning board. We need to have that meeting once a month. Maybe even more every two weeks for a specific category. They need to be going through the zoning ordinance too, and then we need to be approving it with them. Like other counties are doing, we need to step into the modern day instead of being a county that's still from the sixties and eighties. That's where we're at.
Yeah.
And I think we've recognized that. Well, there's a public hearing tonight. You don't like it or you don't feel comfortable approving a permit, you deny the permit. That's how it's done.
Well, and we don't even have to vote tonight.
No, it's a public hearing where you go and listen to the public.
It's a hearing, right. And we can go, so correct me if I'm wrong, we, can we go back to this company and tell them at this point, we have to do some more research, we're, we're, we're holding this permit? I mean, uh, obviously we can do that, but can we change this in the process? So that we can go back to these guys and say, no, you're using the wrong permit, it's three percent. I mean, can we do, can we do that? Are we too far down this path?
With legal recourse?
I don't, you know, to be honest with you, I think that's something that the courts will probably settle or figure out for us, i- if that's what we ended up trying to do.
Well, I can tell you, I can state one opinion, the fact that we have a well documented process of redoing our ordinance book. I've seen dozens of counties, well, dozens might be an extent, but there's been several counties who have denied permits or even drafted moratoriums on permits until they finish their ordinance.
Yeah, right, right.
And if that's what you wanna do, I think there's enough precedent going on with that where you could say that, hey, we're, we're not comfortable passing this permit because we have issues with it as we're going through our ordinances. If you wanna pass the permit with the idea that we already have something in place and this complies to that, I think you could do that too. So it just depends on what you wanna do as a board.
We don't have anything that even address those battery projects.
Well, and again, I think with us, I think we have a pretty well established process we've been working on well before they submitted a permit.
Yeah.
That says that, you know, and we're going through this process for a reason and we're hitting stumbling blocks and the public's coming in and giving us their opinion and is two guys considered the public? That's up to you. Do you think that's worth weighing on? That's fine. And I, I don't disagree with anything they've said.
No, I don't.
But, well, I shouldn't say anything, cause I disagree with the fact that it hasn't been followed through. It has been followed through. I would agree with the fact that it probably hasn't been done properly because nobody that's done it's been an expert. It's been trial by fire. We're getting literally inundated by these corporations that have more lawyers than we have courthouse staff.
That's true.
And they're gonna beat us in this.
They're gonna beat us up.
So I'm telling you that we.
And that's why I'm asking if we have, I mean, if this is gonna wind up in a court deal, if they so choose to push that.
So what do we do? Like, assume they just put a moratorium on it, temporary moratorium?
I mean, I'm just telling you, from what I see, we still have the authority as a board to deny the permit. So if you feel like there's any avenue that you don't feel comfortable with granting this permit, then and you, then you can move to deny it. And we don't have to call for a vote tonight, that's up to the board members. If someone makes a motion, the chairman entertains a motion, then we, then we can vote on it. If you wanna, cause even with the Summit Pipeline, we didn't vote on it until the next meeting, which I thought was very close after the public hearing. Part of the reason was cause we only had four members that night too, somebody was missing. I don't remember who, I'll look back, but there was only four of us there. So I think I was the chairman and I thought it wasn't right that that person wasn't gonna be there to vote, so that already just, before the meeting even started, I think they even stated we're probably not voting that night, but I mean, I've been to, I was at the Civic Center when there was twenty-five hundred people there, the Burley Wind one. I mean, that Civic Center was packed. Nobody expected a vote that night, they voted that night. And I think, so, I thought the public hearing is what's necessary. I think the vote can follow after
Yep.
a special meeting or that, you know, can carry it into the regular meeting, at least that's what we've done before. So I don't, I don't think there's anything that would stop this board from denying a permit. So like, I mean, if you feel like, oh, well, they submitted, well, they sub, you submit a permit on anything, if the board decides that it's something we're not gonna follow through with, I don't think we've made any promises to them that it's gonna pass or we.
No, I didn't feel like we'd promised.
You know, and I think there's enough information there, so just depending on how you feel, I don't think you're under any obligation to vote one way or the other.
Well, we can, I mean, we also have the authority to tell them that you, that you filed the wrong permit.
Well, that's where you might start to run into an issue because you have to define how you're gonna do it. Our interpretation versus definition is probably two different things, so. I mean, that's where I'm just telling you, like, I think you have the ability to deny a permit. I don't know if you have the ability to make them apply a certain way unless you have the definition of how they're supposed to apply. That's kind of the sickiness of our lack of definitions and, I mean, we have definitions, but nothing, nothing that's gonna cover these modern day projects. The definitions are from the nineties and eighties.
Yeah.
So.
Never had a face of before.
Exactly, that's why, and that's why I'm just defending our, again, have we been as fast and reacted as fast as everybody gave me things? Probably not. But we are reacting. We're not just ignorant to the fact that like this blue book is covering everything and we're just going ahead. I mean, we've been digging into this for months already, better part of a year, so. I mean, at some point, I think I've realized that we're kind of spinning in the mud a little bit because it's just the time it takes to be thorough. I think we probably almost need to go in another direction, which is to look at
Yep.
is then having others on board. I, I think that's the best way to do it.
They do it that.
And if you don't wanna draft or pass any projects in the meantime, then I think the agreement would be to probably do a moratorium. I don't think doing it six hours before a public hearing is the proper way to do it.
No.
If you're that scared of it, you go through the motions and if you don't wanna approve it, you deny the permit, but you don't pass a moratorium before a public hearing, that's probably not the proper way to do it, so. So however you wanna do it, as a commissioner, you can vote any way you want, you know, and.
Well, the application for conditional use permit, as you see here, even makes reference to a date of a zoning hearing. And then what the recommendation of that is to the county commission.
Yeah.
Looks to me like, without having a zoning committee or anything like that, this aspect of it is not being fulfilled any, anyway.
Well, and that goes back to even like Jim had mentioned, there was a zoning board or the almost formation of a zoning board. There was a committee that came up with this book. There's been a lot of lack of follow through over the last fifteen years essentially, probably cause there wasn't really a need for it, so it hasn't really been executed, right?
A priority, yeah.
It's always a bigger priority to deal with what road is flooded or what, you know, and things like that. And now this stuff is coming where it's just unavoidable now. It's just too much, so.
This AI and all these data centers, these wind farms and solar.
It's a big deal.
It's only gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. They're looking for this real setting. Open land.
Cause we're easy.
Huh?
We're easy.
Yeah.
We dangle a middle, we pick. Well, it's a lot easier, it's a lot easier, it's a lot easier to bore a fiber optic line through agricultural land than it is through residential.
Oh, you got that right.
You know, I mean, there, there's.
Use the ditch.
It's not that we're, it's not that we're idiots, but they realize we're cheap right now, cause we haven't had this going on like California for twenty-five years.
Well, and just the Carbon Pipeline's a perfect example. You get one landowner, you might secure several quarters of land. You get up east of Bismarck, now you gotta go every ten acres, every fifteen acres of top of the guy. Like, there's a reason they wanna build here too.
Right.
You get a township, there might be fifty landowners up there, there's fifty landowners in every quarter. Now, it's a big deal, like, it's, and everybody's got a different view of value, so that's why it is easier to do business here too.
And, and don't get us wrong, Dave and I aren't here to blame anybody. You guys are doing your jobs, but we're in a new era where we gotta start thinking ahead.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why it's, if it was never, if nobody mentions anything, you don't know until you know something. So now, I think we just have to start looking a little more forward to the future and move some changes. That's all we're asking.
I appreciate you guys coming in.
We might, we might be looking for zoning board members.
Yeah.
Well, imagine if the AI center comes to Emmens County.
And I said it this morning.
What would it cost a billion dollars to build? You know, think of the money for our, and the jobs.
They're coming.
They're coming, but I, I said it this morning, this battery center or this holding center is for a reason.
Yeah.
It's for a data center.
Yep.
The set out there, they don't have the water out there, but they'll pipe it in.
They know way more than we do.
They know a lot more in advance than we do. They look at the big picture.
Yeah, they're five years ahead of us.
Ah.
Yeah, maybe twenty-five.
They got forty attorneys in a building.
Yeah.
Life gap, it's tough. Anything else, guys?
It's hard to move forward.
Yeah, I don't, I think we should.
I think we are moving forward, I know, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
But I mean, we wanna wait another month or, or is there steps that we can take towards this, towards creating a board?
Yeah.
Um, well, I think this, that's, and that's kind of the same deal. I mean, there's, there's gonna be a little bit of research that's involved in doing it. I don't know if we can do it in the next hour here. I'd say
No.
I'd say the recommendation would be to probably just move forward with that. Like, I don't know if there needs to be really a commotion.
No.
No, but I'm even wondering, I mean, can we, do, I mean, two weeks enough? How much research do we need to do? Do we have a special meeting on this?
Well, it's incentive code. I mean, that's where, I mean, a lot, the, the, the creation of that board is incentive code.
Oh, there you go.
You have to.
Well, you gotta go by the guideline.
It's the same thing with, you know, the formation of a township or any kind of other subdivision, there's, there's century code that you have to basically follow, so.
Well, that's where you go.
There's gonna have to be a process involved with doing that. And then there's, there's, uh, there's mill levy limitations, just like in, just like the water board and the wheat board. You know, so. You know, that would, you know, dictate how you fund it, how many employees you're gonna have or where you're gonna pay the board members, it's all based on.
Yeah.
With mill levy, you're gonna mill.
Yeah.
Or you have levy.
So who does that research?
Baker. Joe?
I think I did that years ago too for, to try to figure out how the steps were for, for the procedure to create the zoning board. I just don't remember off the top of my head, my people referenced that.
I'm just curious if we can get this rolling and then when we come to the next meeting, we, we've got something to do rather than go.
Oh, I agree.
Okay, now what do we come up with, what we'll go again next month? I mean, you're right, we are looking forward, but maybe with a little more sense of urgency, if we can have more in place when we come to the next meeting, or if we have to, like I said, have a special meeting because we have to come up with some other stuff or.
Well, I think it makes more sense than trying to even continue with this zoning ordinance update.
I agree.
Cause the other thing about it too is reading in century code how to form a board might take you an hour. I don't even know if it's that extensive. So even just research and time wise, it's probably far easier for us all to become experts on how to form a board than how it is to go and try and figure out our ordinances. The only thing about that is by the creation of a board, that's gonna take some time, so that your zoning ordinance is going to get delayed as well. That being said, I don't think we're making any progress by leaps and bounds or we're really beating the board right now, so. I would say the fair argument would be honestly, if abstract, it would be to probably create a board.
Yeah.
Cause I don't think any one of us are becoming enough of an expert to really spearhead this project. And who's to say when we do it, we're gonna get it right?
Yeah.
There's no guarantee a board's gonna get it right. You know, that being said, they're gonna put specific time into only doing that. Where with us, we're dealing with road issues, we're dealing with pay budgets, care centers, you know, I mean, everything on top of trying to do the zoning, it's just.
No, and I, and I agree with you on that. I'm just saying that's, I think we need to vote something.
Give the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah. Sooner or later, but like I said, I don't wanna come back in a month and be like, so what did everybody come up with? Kinda like the, the books we have, yeah, we're working on it, but it's like every month we come back and it's like, well, who read the Dunn County one, it's eighty-four pages, I didn't get it.
Exactly. I think, I think we're, we're, we're recognizing the problems and we just don't really have the time.
Yeah.
Sorry, I mean, we just don't.
So creating a board takes what?
We don't know. It's in the century code, what we all gotta do.
Okay, Joe, that's what we need to know.
Well, and I think every one of the commissioners should look into it. It's just under, I mean, it's probably actually under the county government board, so that would be, what, eleven? The century code for counties is like eleven, chapter eleven or something, so all your like eleven. I think, title eleven or thirteen is the counties.
Chapter eleven.
I feel like eleven is the right one. That's probably where the formation of your government subdivision boards is gonna be under.
I think they call it zoning commission, I'm sure it's the same thing.
That sounds harder than raindrops out there.
Is that what?
I think it's just blowing under the window compared to what it was blowing before.
Yeah, I would say, Joe said, title eleven's gonna be your county government and then under that is gonna be your your different, your different chapters for your.
Boards of, probably board.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta do something, there's no doubt.
Yeah.
Cause these monsters keep coming. And they aren't gonna stop.
But I tell you, I didn't feel like I had my arm twisted that I had a vote yes or whatever on the, you know, after, on this permit. You know, I, I felt like I could vote, vote it out.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, like, this board still has the authority to either approve or deny a permit, it's just whether or not, you know, like I said, our, our ordinances are kind of a mess, so how you're gonna interpret it is how really you should vote or the, you know, the view of your constituents, you know? If you feel like they're in favor of something or against it, that's, that's your decision and you have to hold to that, you know?
Yep.
So.
But this, and I'll say this, I had guys call me and I won't use no names to identify, but they were upset with this battery storage facility. And I said, you know, and I didn't throw it in their face like an iron sword, a hot sword. I said, you guys signed these easements for these monsters coming in. Now these problems are only just gonna keep coming. They're here, they got their foot placed. They're only gonna keep coming, cause technology just keeps coming.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna keep placing it.
Whatever you ask Siri.
Oh, yeah. It's not a good deal.
Well, you know, I, I've been contacted too and, and, I mean, there's some, there, I, I'm not going to, um, I'm not siding with one person or the other, or, you know, the battery storage, but there's some misconceptions too. A lot of, a lot of issues with fires and stuff are happening in residential areas in California. We know California's prone to wildfires, it doesn't matter what, what sparks them, they get sparked by everything. Um, but with those videos and, and news clips that were sent to me, it was interesting that, and, and this will be a question tonight at the hearing, that they can't build these containers where they shut themselves down and they have a suppression system in them where they suck out all the oxygen and, and dump carbon dioxide in there to put these fires out. You know, that, cause those are, those are concerns. When they start on fire, you know, I, there was somebody, I had somebody say, well, they, they leak on the ground, they don't leak. Lithium batteries are dry batteries, so there's no leak. But they do give off toxic fumes when they're on fire. So, so my question for, for next era would be, why can't you build these Conexes with a, with a fire suppression system rather than just then let them burn? Where you're letting these toxic fumes off? I mean, you can put, you can put CO2 containers on the outside and the minute that something, you know what I mean, you, they, these things are water, I've seen videos of these Conex containers floating in the ocean, they're watertight, they're airtight. You suck all the oxygen out and dump carbon dioxide, I don't care if it's, if it's phosphorus fire, it's going out. Without oxygen, it's going out. So that's, you know, I mean, I, I don't worry so much about burning the, the county down like, like they do in, in California or Arizona because they're building these in residential areas. Um, I mean, right in the middle of houses, but, but it does raise the question of why would you let these burn? You know, whether they're a mile from anybody's house out here in Emmens County, why do you continue to let them burn? That, that would be my question for them tonight. If, I, I think people would feel a lot better about things if there was more precautions, um, you know, cause I know they've sat here. You know, because I know they've sat here and said, well, it meets this federal standard and it beats that federal standard and I think we're all aware that the federal standards aren't necessarily very standard. They're, they're kind of whatever. It doesn't matter, you know, that, they're not to necessarily help the citizens of the United States. They're, they're whatever, but I, I think those, I think hopefully we have a good turnout and there's some, some serious questions about the process. I mean, I, I don't think everybody's a hundred percent against this. You have to look at these ugly giants. We might as well make them more efficient so that we can use the power when we need it. But why can't you make these containers safer for the environment and safer for the people that live around them that have to, you know?
Because they don't have to.
Well, and that's, that's, that's the thing, you know, the, the carbon, the carbon pipeline didn't have to do anything cutting through North Dakota either. But Minnesota, it was a four inch line and it had to have this and it had to be this deep. They set the standard and this, the, the only way they were getting to that plant in Minnesota was if they followed those standards. We didn't do that. The Public Service Commission just let them run whatever the hell they wanted and whatever, death can do whatever they wanted.
Yep.
We don't have to do that with the battery storage. We can ask them, why, we want this and we want this and we want this, and if it doesn't, if you can't provide those.
We don't need you.
Well, then, sorry.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I, I'm not necessarily ready to vote tonight, but I sure am curious to hear what our constituents feel and, and their concerns. And, you know, give some of these questions to the next era. I mean, th- these Conex containers are being built for everything. Make them better so that we don't have fires and we don't sit and watch this thing burn. I mean, they basically told us that, they just let them burn. So if they burn for four days, they just burn for four days. That doesn't make any sense, you know?
Look at the fumes we're inhaling from the Canadian fires.
Yep.
I mean, that stuff is, in my opinion, toxic, banal to all of us.
My biggest concern with the battery storage is they're not efficient enough. Got a little bit of time that they're storing.
Yep.
For a few hours of electricity you get, they're just doing the standard to get by to make millions of dollars. Why don't, they've been around forever. Why don't they make their methods efficient so we can at least get some storage and use it? That's the big question.
It's all on.
All money.
Credit our grandparents. Our grandparents tried them. That's all they used to do.
If they had to stand on their own two feet, they'd be making them more efficient.
They wouldn't be here.
Yeah. No, you're right there.
They wouldn't be here. But they're so heavily subsidized at the expense of all of us.
Q forty-five tax.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Did somebody say that that would only do sixty thousand houses for four hours? Is that true? That battery plan?
I can't even.
There was some talk about that at a meeting, but I can't remember the.
That's four hours.
Yeah.
Four hours on the grid. I don't know what the grid is.
What the grid, you know?
When you research it, it's, the amount of storage that they actually have is not a lot.
No.
No, it's not. Chasing the Q forty-five tax. So, well, if we go to the public, well, the general way to move it to discuss, I guess, the German rule.
Well, why, why don't you open that public comment opportunity while you have some people sitting?
You guys are here.
If anybody else wants to talk and then we can do a lot.
Okay, public comment opportunity pursuant to be S B two one eighty.
That's Senate Bill twenty-one eighty that got passed. This is Senate Bill twenty-one eighty where you, you have to put it on the agenda to allow the public comment. You have to make a comment during meetings. So I have to have that on the agenda.
Okay. You're open. You can open. Please say what you want to say.
What's this about again, though?
What's Senate Bill? Senate Bill twenty-one eighty passed. When it was passed, you have to put a public comment opportunity in your minutes for local, you know, county park boards. All these boards have to have this now. We, we did it last night at the city council, same deal. It's, it's a visitor thing, but it's gotta be stated as a public comment opportunity. Yeah.
Every meeting.
Yep.
Don't you have that already? You have a public comment?
Well, it's just how it's written down and how, how it has to be put on your agenda according to that Senate bill.
Not allowed to affect.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
They don't have to be on the agenda to speak.
Nope, no, it's just a public comment.
Emmons County's always been pretty good about if someone's sitting in the corner. I mean, it's not, you're not gonna see a huge change for us.
No.
There are, especially you take maybe like a city like Fargo or something. If you don't get on their agenda, they probably don't let you speak.
Well, even your park boards, it's just something that's gotta be added to your agenda.
It's literally just verbiage to your agenda.
Yep, that's all it is, yeah.
I guess, I'm not a fan of another bill, another rule. If we already have it, why put something else?
Well, yeah.
Well, it's, truth be told, that's because there were, even if there were probably some poorly run boards as far as like letting people speak and I mean, there's a fine line between letting people rant rave for an hour and also just letting people come in. Like, we've had people come in all over the years that just, hey, I heard there was a meeting today. I didn't know who to call or what to do. And you're like, what's going on? And they come in and nine times out of ten, it's something very reasonable, just like, didn't know who to call to tell that a culvert was out. Well, this is a good place to come in and let us know and thanks for coming in.
Done it, yeah.
If we say yes to that, does that still, like Aaron just said, if somebody comes in and rants and raves, do you have authority to cut them off?
I think you do.
Under this deal?
After fifteen.
With this bill, can you cut them off?
I don't know what the bill reads exactly.
Oh, I don't either.
Do you know it?
Well, there's, all I can tell you is there's still decorum and there's still like the authority of things like the chairman to run an orderly meeting and, I mean, nobody's got the right to come in and just flat out assault people. I, I mean, I'd say if you did stop someone, you better have a good reason, otherwise you might get sued. I don't know. I mean, there's obviously caveats to that too, but I don't, I mean, I didn't read, I didn't read twenty-one eighty, but there's probably some limitations in there on speaking time or maybe, you know, I don't know, because.
Jack wants us to speak.
George, I, I don't know if this pertains to twenty-one eighty, but in the Bismarck Tribune in the last two or three days, they were discussing something like this in the Bismarck Mandan Commissions and Bismarck Mandan, I think the city, whatever it is. But they, they specifically said on there what they're gonna be doing and some of those cities or county commissioners are limiting it to thirty minutes and three minutes or five minutes per person.
Three. So, I mean, if you got a whole bunch of people out there, there's people that aren't gonna be able to testify, but what, that's what they're, that's what was in the Tribune, so.
Three five per person.
Here it is, a governing body of a city, county, township, school district, park board, a water resource district may limit a public comment only as follows except as provided in subdivisions. Be by time per speaker, total time for public comment or both. By agenda topic to the agendas of the current and at least one preceding meeting. And then it says, shall develop a policy regarding public comment rules for regular meeting. A policy may provide a public comment must be pertained, pertinent to the public entity, may not interfere with the county or with the orderly conduct of the irregular meeting, may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing or unlawful and may be prohibited if an alternative proceeding, procedure exists to bring that particular type of public comment before the public entity. The public comment includes confidential or exempt information or the public comment is otherwise prohibited by law.
Right. So if you follow those guidelines, if you feel something's defamatory as the chairman, you could probably stop it.
Yeah.
Now, you better be prepared to defend that because if they don't, then you might get sued.
And it probably comes down to there may be a, there, there is a possibility if we get people in here that wanna talk for four hours, we may have to say, you have fifteen minutes and that's just.
All right, and then again.
That's the way it is. You might get sued if that fifteen minutes just go on a fifteen minute.
Well, and the truth.
What you just read, that's part of their harassment and stuff like that. That's included.
Yep.
In there.
Yep.
Well, I think the big difference is, is there's technically nothing that states that like the public gets a chance to speak during the meetings. And what I mean by that is you have an agenda, it's a public meeting, everyone's allowed to attend, but like us letting folks speak during the agenda items is kind of just the way we've always done it.
Yeah, it's like this.
Like, there, there's no raw that's like, oh, well, Dave was on the agenda, he got to speak. But then Kevin, yeah, well, if you're not on the agenda, sort of can't, well.
You're not speaking.
We've never been like that.
You're not speaking, yeah.
So it's not a big deal, but there are other areas where they're like, no, he can't speak. He's not on the agenda. And, you know, they probably are right, even though that's maybe not a good way to conduct business, but you can also have circumstances where you have one guy on the agenda and now you got seven people talking, which we've had. And you can have disarray, you know, so it just depends how you wanna run your meetings where now this law states, no matter what, you gotta lay your side, you know, fifteen minutes for just people to come in and just.
Right.
And hopefully they're respectful and they're just getting things across and it's fine, but.
Don't you think that's, this stems back to FBI going in the school board meetings and taking people out? I'm a, well, I have a firmly belief that's where it started.
Probably.
You think that's what created that?
Yeah, where they would come in and now, I mean, if you didn't agree with the grade with all the school board, they just haul you out.
And that, I mean, there's, I've seen plenty of videos of, you know, government entities that are just like not letting people speak, which in my mind is wrong. I mean.